Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's Halloween, so you never know what's happening. I say none of you are in disguises. I'm just imagining. Welcome to the Corinth County Commissioners' Court.
It is Halloween.
It is Halloween. Good to have you all here. During the time I've been in office, I never made, I've got to confess, I never made maybe one of the prior Commissioners' Court meetings when Judge Shawson was in office, but I really do appreciate the amount of attendance and just facing everybody that's given us in these sessions. I think by and large, the sessions have been civil, some shortness between certain individuals at times, but I think overall, the conversation and communication between everybody's been good, and that's all to the credit of all of you who are here. And that's how we can most effectively govern and most effectively represent that county. We're going to have the roll call of Commissioner Yar.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Commissioner Duthen.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Shendel.
You.
I'm Richard Hall around here as well. Always had great fears in my memory of telling so bad when one of these days I was going to forget one of your names. We're sure of it. Luckily, that hasn't happened. Now we'll have an opening prayer. By the way, thank you for this day, and thank you for all still alive and living on this earth. We thank you for the rainfall, and thank you for the big rainfall that's coming after this one. And we thank you for the prosperity our county has enjoyed, help us to do what we should with these blessings, and to help all the people of Corinth County. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Let's put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, at this point on the agenda, we do have citizens to be heard. If someone wants to speak at this point, they can. Normally, what we've been doing, just kind of marked into this, we'll let people speak as we get to the particular agenda items that they want to talk about. And so, that's okay with everyone, and that's what we're going to do again today. The first item is discuss Corinth County's day of preparedness as part of Corinth County's prep on November 13th, November 13, 2014. Suzanne Quayle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Stop by the seat, yes, if anybody wants to work.
What I'm handed to you is an informational flyer.
Red light on. You have to get away from the position, man.
Is it on?
Yeah.
What I'm handed to you is an informational flyer about what we're doing. On November 13th, between 9:00 and 30:00 a.m., we will test the tone, the warning signal, which is a three to five minute siren that is part of our, and our warning annex is part of our Corinth County's plan. Because the tone is going to go off, I've talked to some of our institutions within the county, schools and things like that, encouraging them, if you want to practice your plan at that time, go ahead. It gives us an opportunity to have an audience that can give feedback as to whether or not the tone is affected. This flyer is something that I can disseminate in the community and to also all of our respective departments within the county. The other flyer is the new iInfo flyer that's been sent out by STRAM, and it has this barcode so that if you have an iPhone, you can scan the code and it'll take you directly to the site to sign up. We can also test the iInfo system on that day about what the drill is and what the siren means. And that's basically what I do.
I know somebody wrote a letter, a kind of smart and lettered editor in paper about tornado drill, and you don't want tornadoes here, anything. Do you see this being also a citizen preparing for something possibly more likely to happen, like a big industrial fire or a release or something like that?
Yes, sir. The three to five minute warning tone is like the same tone that would be set off in that type of instance.
Is it possible in the future, because something like that may occur within our area with the amount of industrialization, highly volatile materials around here, something like that is probably a question of time, will we have some kind of engine like that? Is it possible we could have some kind of practice regarding that kind of engine where our local funders, fire, police, EMS, would have some training about what to do in case of a mass situation like that?
Yes, sir, and that's something that we have been working toward. We had a tip-to-top drill on July 31st with first responders and other volunteers that would be involved in that type of instance. We talked about the incident that we had on May 9th and what happened. Since that time, we've had a communication seminar to kind of discuss gaps in our communication systems, just being able to talk to one another when our first responders are out, doing what they do, that everybody gets the message of what they need to do and so forth. The other thing that we've been working on is ensuring that our first response is trained in our incident command system that's required by NMS and by our county's plan. In addition, the severe weather, of course, was the cause of that hazmat incident. May of last year was not a good month across the region, and regionally, STRAC is working on a regional drill. Drills such as this will allow us to be able to work in conjunction with STRAC, sharing information that we receive about our systems through our drills.
Why don't you go and look at STRAC?
STRAC is our regional.
South Texas Regional Advisory Council has thought to do with the medical part of the city. Okay.
And they're assisting, they assist us with communication systems. We will be working on having some training. Our partner county is Adesosa with WEOC, and that is a system that allows us to be able to communicate with other counties within our region.
So, you're going to look at your position as being one of coordinating all the various funding groups or funding agencies that will respond in case of emergencies, so that when one happens, they're ready, they know what to do, they know how to communicate, and the system is already in place?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make sure that everybody understands about the iInfo. Last night, in the deserving attendance in Floridville at that security conference room, some people were concerned about how they can be informed of, say, bailouts or something going on within the county. And this iInfo is not just for weather-related issues, it's for several things it can be used for. And a lot of the surrounding counties have that. Of course, you have to subscribe to it. I mean, it's a freebie. You go online and you enter your cell phone number and you select your county, decide what you want to be notified about, and then when something happens, we have to send out the message. And I don't know, between you and Duane for like bailouts or whatever, I don't know how y'all are going to work that out, but that's something that we need probably to look forward to. And can you tell the people the different tones, what it'll sound like, because it's not the regular fire siren you're going to be hearing when this thing goes off?
It's a longer siren. It's three to five minutes. And often when we have to do whether the siren goes off for fire because we have light use rights, much more than we have before, and people will call, that's one of the things that the sheriff, is the sheriff here?
Please step down.
That's one of the things that the sheriff and I talked about was that there is a lot of confusion during severe weather as to what the siren is. And this will give our community the opportunity to hear the warning siren as opposed to the fire siren.
Corinth County bought sirens for all the cities through a grant process back in 2006. However, in the future, I'd like to see us plan to have a, put a siren in the area of Gillette, in the area of Panama Maria, so, or Hobson, these areas that are remote, but yet when something's going on, those people in that area can kind of get an idea for what's going on. I think that's looking like over the next three to five years.
That's a good idea, and I think I agree. The other thing that I wanted to share with you along the lines of hazmat is that we have been working with FEMA to perform these drills. They have consultants that help communities provide meaningful drills for first responders. And one of the things that they would like Corinth County to participate in is a drill that would include hazmat that could be recognized by the state at their conference next summer. And that's something that I've been talking with other members of our emergency response group, and we will discuss that during our LAPC meeting this next month. Okay, what do you need and what would be the most meaningful to you to practice during that type of drill?
Thank you, Samantha. Do you have a question?
And I, if you'd like, I have additional copies of exactly what I gave to you that I can put in the back for community members to have.
That's fine, yeah. We can put them back there for ergonomics. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next time is number seven, discuss approved disproved MOU for food services provided by San Antonio Food Bank in Corinth County for the 2014-2015 year. They provided us with a memorandum of understanding on that. What is the amount? Do we put it in there for the year? It's only $2,000. We've got $42,750 built in. I just want to make sure we're complying with that budgetary amount.
Yeah, I think it's $42,750. Well, while they're looking at it, I'd like to share something. Yesterday, we had a food policy committee, and they gave us, and the food bank was present, and they shared some statistics with us for Corinth County. It was based on 2012 census, but it was from the Feeding America that gathered all the information. Food rating security for the county, for Corinth County is 17.2% of the county population at 2012. There's 2,560 people that have problems getting food. And to the school side, there was approximately 30.6% or 880 kids that are having problems getting food. So, our $42,000 that we provide, I think is a real, is really a worth thing that we're doing, giving back to the community. And this is 2012, but you look at 2014, that we are now, and things have gone up tremendously, and I'm sure these numbers are probably even more devastating than we were in 2012. 880 kids to me is one school district. 2,760 people to me is one community. So, you know, I ask y'all to support the food bank and all the endeavoring.
In the current budget, we have $6,750 for the senior mobile pantry and $36,000 for the regular mobile pantry, for the total of $42,750.
Okay. All right, I'd make a, there's no further questions, because I'm making a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding providing that we will provide $42,750 for the food bank services that we get here in Corinth County that they do distribute to the people who need. That's my motion. I'll take it. Hold on, Trevor. Yeah. We're just going to ask you. You're going to make sure, keep track. All right, next item. Discuss approved disproved agreement for legislative services to be provided by Stephen As we know, the last, I guess, two or three years, the county has participated along with Dewitt County and I think there were three other counties in the employment of a legislative consultant, or we're going to call it lobbyist, to give the word for it, by the name of Stephen Horsehouser. Received a letter on October 7, 2014, from Judge Fowler of Dewitt County, and it seems that, as he says, as of this day, three counties have entered into this agreement. Please note in the agreement, six will be on the line, that each county contributes $2,500 per month, that's one third of the monthly consulting fee of $7,500 per month. This cost here shall be reduced accordingly if other counties enter into the agreement. So, it's Hewitt, Corinth, and apparently one other county at this time. The objectives that we want this person to realize are, I think, first and foremost, and then try to get the legislature to, you know, get more money down here in grants similar to 74.7, or work on county roads. I think also importantly is trying to get text dot, the legislature to direct influence or however they can, text dot, to start spending some money on our highway system down here. Those of us who drive those roads every day know, just, you know, difficult things for coming. I don't know if they would come off the county roads, but the FM roads and some of the highways in this county are hazardous. There's no other way to put it. And they definitely need to be fixed, and we can't do it. That's the state that is dealing. So, we must have some influence and some voice up there in getting it done. Judge Fowler has been the county judge that's been spearheading this effort, and he does a really good job of staying on top of the issues, consulting constantly with the lobbyist. Any consults he may do, he can back and sends an email a long time letting, you know, what the latest approach is. So, I'm comfortable with this. I don't know what we have allocated in our budget for this year. One, can you remember?
I don't remember. It's $1,000 a month or if it's $1,500? I think it's $1,000.
Okay. I guess all we can do this time is tell Judge Fowler that we will sign off for the amount that's in that budget, whether it's $1,000 or $1,500. I would think at this point it merits an emergency increase, and I suspect he will accept the amount that we paid last year and hope to get the other two back on board. So, I will move that we enter into the interlocal agreement between Corinth County and Dewitt County for the amount that we have put in our 2014-15 close per year budget, not that we amend the budget, to add it up to this $25,000. I would say we have $25,000.
Specific to the budget, it is $20,000 per year.
$20,000 per year?
It's $1,600 and change.
Close, right. I would recommend that we go with that.
I'll second that. I'll comment that I did go to Austin Servant Time myself before we got 1747, met with those people, and I can't effectively represent Corinth County. We do need someone up there. So, I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Done.
It's $20,000, if you're concerned.
We'll revise the written agreement that he sent to reflect the $20,000 figure. I'm number nine, discuss approved disproved Corinth County Courthouse Annex parking lot final pay application and deductive change order number two. Ms. Steller.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner.
Good morning.
The parking lot project has been completed. The civil engineer has signed off on all of the work in place, and the contractor's offering a credit of $250 for aesthetic items that he was not able to satisfactorily take care of. The civil engineer, again, has signed off on everything, and the items that remain are aesthetic. And so, we propose that we take a credit and close out this project.
What item would be the standard?
There's some stain around that ramp that stains coming up. There's some little dribbles of the stain. They restained the ramp like three times because it was not stained well, and they're not able to, you know, get rid of them. I've expected it. Every week when I come down here, he says, "Look at it again," and they're still there. So, finally, they offer this credit.
To me, it's cosmetic. In five years, it'll be all a different color, so it doesn't make a lot of difference. You can't fix it, you can't do it. The stain didn't turn out good the first time. It painted, but it would be lost.
I had the experience of trying to stain country or ranch. Very difficult to get that.
Yes, sir.
And the correction they had to, to make it ADA compliant?
That stain completed, yes, sir.
And that was at their cost?
At their cost, yes, sir.
So, around the bill that's in the cycle this time period for $7,081.90, that includes the common?
Yes, ma'am. And that includes the change order?
Is there the final bill?
The final bill, and then includes the $250 credit.
Hold on, favor? All right.
coming up from the street to the parking, into the parking lot?
So, the, making it accessible?
No, it just needs to be fixed. I mean, it's very uneven, and you have to, the cars have to go up.
We talk.
Between the street level.
Which street level?
And the parking lot.
Over here?
Yes.
That's Berry Street? Okay. I think it would seem like it. I guess there is a curve in the city, I mean, the curve out, the curve in. I would assume that's it. I was thinking, is there a, when you're leaving the parking lot, you're talking, there's a big dip off, drop off there.
It's a big.
Curving out.
It is. And when you, can you park in to the parking lot?
Yeah. That sounds like a city problem, and both of them are city area.
Can anybody tell us how much the parking lot costs, considering it goes and covers the entire area? I mean, it's for all intents and purposes, it's only a parking lot.
It's on the bottom of that change order.
$146,387,99. Number 10. Discuss approved disproved entering into a contract with Fisher Hakeen Architects to prepare construction-ready documents for final phase of the bronze restoration project and assistance pending the Texas Historical Commission grant for the final phase of restoration. This hall depends on the legislature funding. The Historical Commission with the money to give these grants. But the, we don't have construction-ready documents. We're not ready to proceed with the grant writing process that takes place next fall. We won't get it done. Fisher Hake, as you know, or some of you know, was the initial architect on the entire bronze restoration project. courthouse restoration project and did the work during at least part, or one of the phases. Was eventually replaced by Graham Blue, an architect up Houston. Mr. Lynn, due to some personal problems, kind of unable to work on that. And there are a limited number of architects in the state that the Historical Commission recognizes as having sufficient expertise in restoration, but they will sign off on their work and their, their being employed as architects. And that's where we want to go with this. And so, Mr. Fisher provided me with a proposal. Fisher, you would like to come and tell us what your proposal?
Good morning.
Yes?
Well, I, I did provide this cost estimate for the judge. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to once again work for Orange County. I want to say this morning that, you know, any time you are hired to work on a project, you, you understand our clients are and all of our clients. And definitely we will be working with you in the best interest. We do know that we have to coordinate back and forth with the Texas Historical Commission and have full communication about what's going on, what they're saying to us, so I can tell you that. But we do want to take a look at, you know, the plans that were done in two thousand and seven. Lot has transpired, built a lot of building here and a lot of improvements. So we need to look at those plans again. I want to meet with y'all and make sure that the plans are the way you want them to be built. And I can work with the Historical Commission to get them to approve that again. And then we can revise the construction documents. And there's a lot of information that we have and it's going to change. So for us to have those documents, we can save y'all a lot of money, I think.
And you will, will also assist us with the writing of the application for the grant?
Right. We, we previously dissolved several times in applications. And so we have a lot of base information. And we'll update that and account that the THC wants it. We will, I'm sure, work with Suprider, her group to provide other information. We'll need letters of support. We'll need a new resolution for the commission's court. And all those pieces will be bound into a document about this thing and submitted. And it would be great if the lobbyists can also go and talk to various people in the state and say, "Orange County needs this money. Please fund this project."
Reminder, reminder, that's why we're sending you there.
Yes, exactly. I, I think y'all stand a very good chance because y'all have been in the queue for many years now and you've done things and you're making progress. A few years ago, we didn't get funded, but that's because the progress was kind of interrupted. But now, things have been going very well and they can see that the county is serious about the project and they're ready to report this. So I think you stand a very good chance. We also did a few things a few years back by getting the buildings or having some historical destinations. It gives us extra points when they're scoring the grant application. So those points will remain. And I think you stand a very good chance if the legislature will just fund the projects.
Okay. Mr. Fisher, if the legislature doesn't build a project, in your estimation, how long do you think it would take to complete the courthouse if the county decides to build it on its own, if we can't get the funding? Would you finish that?
I, I think so. I think if they don't get the money in two thousand and sixteen, you could complete the project in about eighteen months.
Wouldn't we know probably by the legislative session though, whether or not they put enough money into the Historical Commission for that purpose?
Right.
That we could even have a chance of getting?
We'll know that by next June or whenever they, you know, the session's over and if they funded it or they haven't funded it, we'll know that, that time.
But in any event, we, we need to go ahead and have the plans ready for contractors.
Right.
At least by next budget, we should have a good feel about what's, for the county budget, a good feel for what's going on.
Correct.
Mr. Fisher, would you address the charges? Would you address the charges to the court?
The, the fees.
What you said, what's it gonna cost?
What's the estimate?
What's it gonna cost to build it if the state doesn't have any money and continue with the project? What do, what do we need to, what do we need to have to pay for?
We have not yet sold any bonds.
Exactly.
But all those bonds are outstanding. We haven't sold any of them. We haven't needed to do so to build any of the stuff we've built till far. So that would be a goal.
I think it'd be prudent for us to know, you know, for example, if the state legislature does not fund the project.
Right.
What's it gonna cost? What's it gonna cost to finish the project and get it done?
And, you know, I think there's also something you're not discussing, Ray, since if, if they don't fund it, which we've been assured so many times that we're going to, if they don't, whether that would give us any relief from the easement, you bring it and stuff. You know, I think that's something that I would be looked at because if they, if they won't follow through to their part of the bargain and their part of the consideration for us granting the easement, it seems like we need to look at that as well. I don't want to do that ahead of time and stir trouble up with them, but you know, if, if they don't come through, I guess I'm going to probably look at that.
The reason for that would be because we do have easements. We are obligated to do it under whatever direction the Texas Historical Commission says. They may give us some relief on a few things that we wouldn't have to exactly if they relieved us of the easement. Does that sound correct?
I think so.
In our last meeting there that Richard and I were at, they did tell us that the next time that we apply for any grant, it has to be a complete grant. We can't apply for any more partial than the last two.
Well, they certainly thought that would be the way to go. You know, it did, as I recall, Mark Cowan was that saying that. Because I told him, I didn't think we could afford to just keep getting a piece at a time and ever get this project finished. It's gonna deteriorate and people are gonna lose their enthusiasm. We're getting it done. And I think we want to go ahead and get it done in one fell swoop now. So.
Pete, given that, does anybody have a number?
But the number that you're, you estimated were your services to take us through the point where you're going to, where we'll get the grant or we don't?
It's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And we've, you know, I think the next step would be for us to write a contract, present it to y'all, y'all review it, have your attorney review it, whatever gets asked of us, renegotiate that, and then we can move forward.
I will say that that's the same amount that was estimated with grand money when we were talking about. Yes?
If we're at the grant process, as I understand, it would be, maybe next June, probably before we would know whether we got funding from the state.
Correct.
So in the meantime, what, what's gonna happen with the building? Is it gonna sit there or are we gonna do something?
Roof, roof projects.
Roof will be going on.
There's another project that Lorraine is working on that will be restoring the complete roof or ninety-five percent of the roof. So that'll be going on, but I won't be involved in that portion. I'll be doing the construction documents to do all of the interior restoration, the air conditioning, electrical, finish up.
And I think you would agree, uh, we need to get that building done and occupied or it's just gonna become a part of us. And then we just wasted all this money.
Correct.
And so you want to address the large crack that is on the west end? Somebody else will?
Yeah, we will address that, yes.
Okay.
What is the total amount of the grant that we're asking for?
We will ask for the maximum amount that, roughly the maximum amount that, that we can ask for, which would be in the range of several million dollars. They will give up.
It'd be about four.
About four.
It'd be six million is the maximum the county can receive. And we've already received six hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand, another four hundred fifty thousand, in the range of four million.
Will that be enough to complete the project?
No, it's proportionate.
So what are we, what are we looking at for cash dollars match?
We haven't revised an official cost estimate, but if we, what I did is I took the estimate of construction from two thousand and ten and I inflated it about fifteen percent. And that would give me a cost, overall cost of about nine million. And then that's already done, three and a half million. So we're down at about six, six billion left. If we get four from the state, our back, how many share would be two million?
This been the plan on the long is for the county to pay about three million and get about five million in total grants. And so far, you know, we're, we're on that schedule.
Yeah, and like you said, so while we're in, I had to use you.
But it could go, you know, it could be.
And I would suggest we don't have to use your funds, but come. There, I had a talk earlier, the use of unencumbered funds for capital improvement projects. As long as our unencumbered fund balance is very healthy and growing, uh, mine makes more sense rather than going into debt and so on by.
I think as long as it's visible, what we're spending, and it's not just hidden in these snippets here and there. I think, I think that's where you lose, at least me, when we're just poking money in it and we don't have a final cost, you know, public side.
You're right. And so we'll, we'll be getting a, once we get these constructions out and printed, prepared as soon as you can, we want to have a, a good firm construction cost base.
In this figure, I've put in money for a professional cost estimator.
Okay.
So it's an independent cost estimate from, from the justest cost estimate.
Okay. Very good. Well, I guess what we need to do is to approve, I'd make a motion that we approve entering into a contract, subject to the contract being approved. We have an outside counsel that, that County Attorney Consultative, that Construction contracts. I suggest that he look at this and bring this proposed by the architect. And that the amount of fees be approved in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you very much. We're glad you, glad you're willing to make your project.
We want to get it done. Party, party on the road. Thank you. Discuss, approve, disapprove, allow, so what my corporation being allowed to pour under county roads are in the alternative, make no cuts in county roads when installing water lines under county roads. Who is responsible for maintenance of road cut areas if they are open? Um, we have a representative here, Ms. White?
Yes.
Of Ellis, I mean, I think this was not really so much a motion to get party to do something, as though on clarification. And go ahead.
Okay. In the past, we, we had, we weren't struck by road and bridge departments always bore all the county roads.
Okay. Yeah. Could you speak through that and put it right up in your round?
Basically, in the past, by the road and bridge departments, we've always been advised we have to bore all of the county roads. We are asking the commission's court to come up with a written practice or policy for us to follow. Recently, we received permits back saying that we can overcut them because it's individual property of that dead end road. We provide water service in four different counties. In each one of these counties, we have to bore the county roads, even if it's a dead end road. So we're asking for direction, how y'all want to handle this. I mean, if the commission court decides to open all the county roads, I'm requesting a letter from the county to release a lawsuit, any liability and damages to the county.
Mike, what would your preference be for water lines being put under the roads? More?
My preference would be more, because there's too much money in these roads to have when we get a lawyer to come out there and open up a road because he wants to get a water line from one side to the other. And it doesn't open it up just to the local, it opens it up to the public too that has land on both sides.
Right. Seems reasonable for that really thing.
And under one lane, you got to think under consideration where you can go. You know, I understand if it's heavy and traveled, roads need to be lowered, but this road that I went out there and inspected myself, two people driving this road, it's thirty foot from a dead end gate. I don't see why, we wouldn't hold y'all liable. The man told me that he has material there to fix the road back. He has permission from the other landowner and they're the only two people that travel that road. That's the reason I gave him permit to cut the road.
And what, we just close the road? Okay. If both of them have talked about and may have petitioned the court to close the road, that's gonna be an issue. And, I mean, I'm just asking. If nobody, the only two people on that road, I mean, is it, how long is that road? By a mile?
Give me your chandelat, the one that you said that we could cut. That, that individual is actually coming off our main transmission line, which is a sixteen inch water line. And I would feel much more comfortable that we could bore that road. And so.
What about your answer? I didn't know, was that big a lineup or about four inches? Is that big? I think.
So I was, I was concerned about the expense. They told me it costs them seven thousand dollars. Well, what does it cost to board? Forty-five hundred, did you say?
Yes, sir. Because we do not own a boring machine, so therefore we have to contract out. And so sometimes it could be forty-five hundred dollars. You're gonna come in, I'm gonna tell you forty-five hundred dollars because I don't know if to a contractor can actually go out there and review it. It could be cheaper, then it could be more, so.
All right. I wouldn't talk to Karen. I, I told her, if y'all have a ditching machine, you ditch across for the six-inch ditch, you put a four-inch pipe in there. We would have more less disturbance than the macro. So therefore, what would it cost to ditch across? Did y'all come up with anything on that?
Basically, if, if we were to go back in and do something as far as, and Mike, if it's portable fill or something like that, to get it really, really stable, because you can't really camp a six-inch ditch. You can water camp it, you can backfill it, but it's gonna, it's gonna be there and it's gonna be problematic. You're probably looking at a third, probably a thousand, twelve hundred dollars. Time wise.
My main thing about this thing is, from what I understand, the person that is filing the application is responsible for taking care of the ditch. But on the issue, by the law, if, if they have an accident, this is a public road. If they have an accident out there, whose law? The county? Because they give a permission to go out there without the credentials. I mean, it, it, it's something we need to look at, because they've got out there on the weekend and take care of their ditch because apparently the local won't be doing the, the maintenance on it. It'll be the person that is actually applying the permit from what I, from what I understand.
Well, that is, that's fortunate to get those who want to ditch, board under to get over to my place, but, you know, I don't know that to save myself money, I should be able to jeopardize a county road. You know, we all spend money to fix those county roads up and we all, no matter who's traveling on it, we all spent money to fix those roads. It seems like to give somebody a, a good deal or cost them less. It seems like to give somebody a, a good deal or cost them less money to run a water line, we're jeopardizing the road. Cause I, my experience with them is it's awful hard to ever get it back like it was once you destroy the integrity of that road and cut it across. So I, I think I would think when I want to pass resolution, saying that all such lines would be bored. Uh, and then if someone wants a, an exception to it, they have to come to the commission court and ask for a, some kind of an exception. And then we had to deal all these problems of liability and everything, and we probably see it so complicated, we probably wouldn't do it. Uh, so that'd be my thought, is let's just pass resolution, we'll have all, uh, water lines and other such lines that cross county roads bored. Unless a specific exception is granted by the commission court. Any segments?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Mike, listen back on this question, do you think all companies cut through the roads at all?
No, sir, no.
They don't put in, uh,
Culvert?
Culvert pipes and then run water lines through it?
Yeah, they have a culvert pipe on there. And it is done according to our specs, it's not, I, they just throw, and it's not an open line.
Do you make sure you take care of the seaking?
Yes, sir, they sure do. That's Allen's job and that's, uh, right now the Hollis job, but yes, sir.
Quite frankly, I think anytime anyone crosses a road, you want to put a pipe in for, I mean, they want to have a pipe for drains, you know, they restrict to the culvert. They ought to put, install another culvert.
That's what they've been doing.
That's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
So they, cause it doesn't, it feeds the drain just like.
Yeah, because when they feed through our existing culvert, they restrict you to water flow and we won't let them do that.
Good. I'm number twelve, discuss, approve, disapprove, DX five funds for purchasing vehicles and equipment from two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget also by Michael Washington.
Okay, what I have is, uh, I got twenty million dollars in my budget. Seven million, seven hundred thousand goes to seventeen forty-seven. I have a million fifty-nine and that number is going to be one or the other because of the fact, if we go with a commercial grade distributor or we go to what they call a county made. Uh, county road two seventy-seven bridge replacement is, is averaging about seventy-six thousand of bid worth. And then the San Antonio River Bridge, that's encapsulating those footings on the San Antonio River Bridge, is estimated roughly about two hundred twenty-five thousand. So what that does, that comes out to nine million, sixty, sixty dollars and eight hundred. Okay, you subtract that total amount from our twenty million dollars. I have ten million, nine hundred thousand, twenty-five, one eighty-three, fifty-five left to do the roads. Uh, then going back, we have the seal coat program, that's coming out of road bridge special. I have two million, three hundred thousand rough guess. Uh, we're gonna take six hundred thousand, we got a ready bid for the first twenty-five. And then I got an estimation because we're doing a two course, one point nine million, thirty-seven, two hundred. Is what I estimated the two course for the other thirty-three point four miles, which is the roads done. So what I'm doing is I need to get the approval to go ahead and get this equipment going. And the equipment that I'm looking at is, uh, we have interest that we have to pay on the steel wheel roller, which is three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Now, we have a Cooper distributor, which is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-six, twenty-five, in which is, that's the county grade. And then we have Romco with the Bearcat, in which is the commercial grade, and it's at a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred forty-three. And then I have three tandem dump trucks that I'm trying to get replaced, unit two oh one, two oh two, and two oh six. Unit two oh one has three hundred and five thousand miles. Unit two oh two has seven hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-five, just getting close to a million miles, that's pretty good. Unit two oh six has four hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-seven. We could do a lot of money and maintenance to keep these things going, and I think we need to get three new ones to replace. I have a brush cutter that's on there, that I only have one brush cutter, when it's down, I have nothing. And that brush cutter, the estimated cost, a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-one, forty-eight. I have a skid steer that we have a grapple already at the, on the dump area. And James has let me use it in the past, I'm sure he'll let me use it in the front to go with this. And, uh, the skid steer for road bridge, keep it, you know, use all, all the time, is sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. And then we need to get a vacuum truck to where we can suck out that water out of these tanks a lot faster than what we've been doing. So we can get these roads, but I have numerous complaints about dust. And I need to get another vacuum truck, we have that Green Army truck and we have that one five thousand gallon bucket truck. And that one is estimated at a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty, and that's with the tank, truck, everything. Uh, I have a belly dump, we got, uh, that one water truck we have in Rungy, tech doc, uh, UPS turnaround saying, don't never put it on the road again, destroy it. So what we did, when we figured we use that truck, get a belly dump and that'll give us another truck and take one of those down, we can keep hauling. That cost is forty-seven thousand, four hundred four dollars. Then I've got two thirty-five hundred HDs, in which is that pickup with the utility box on it. One of them is going to go to the sign truck, where the sign man has his own truck. And the other one's going to, a mechanic truck, eventually we gotta hire a mechanic. But I'll have the truck ready, but that truck will be based in Gillette with tools in it, cause they have nothing in Gillette right now. And then we have, uh, three, uh, we got a two thousand fifteen, twenty-five hundred pickup. And we're trading in a Dodge pickup for that one, in which is unit three oh one, it has a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred seventeen. Sometime we're looking at that thing gets forty-five miles an hour. Uh, and that cost is twenty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-nine. And then the two foremen, I want to take the two foreman pickups and put them in a crew. And get them some four by four, because if they ever get called out at nighttime and they get stuck in a ditch, or there's a tree down, they'll be able to hook a wrench to it and pull that tree off the road without having to haul piece of equipment. And eventually we're gonna get rain, we're gonna get hurricanes. Uh, and the other, those, those two trucks that I'm trading in on that one is unit three oh two, it's got two hundred and seventeen thousand miles, nine hundred and sixty. The other one is three oh four, it has two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one. The cost of those two pickups will be fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. And then I'm getting a half ton crew cab. We've been going to a lot of these, uh, eight-one-one trains, dig tests and all this. What we're doing is we're dragging three or four trucks over there, I figure we need a little half ton crew cab. When we can put everybody in one truck, they stop dragging all these trucks all over the place. And, uh, that truck is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty. If we buy the Bearcat, which is a commercial grade distributor, it's a million ninety-three, oh one, oh five. If we buy the county grade, the Etnire, it's a million eighty-four, eight hundred eighty-four thirty. And I'm looking at.
You can't rent those types of things?
Like what?
Those two last things?
No, the distributor, no, because what it is is.
Oh, everything?
Yeah, what it is, is you can't rent them because when we need it, it's the season for everybody to do it. I've done, got them, trying to see if we can have it. We got, well, I put it to you like Romco told me, between Bradlin and, and Jay Carroll and all that, they'd have got a book for the next two years.
Where are those, you have total cost per second, you have Bearcat, Bearcat as long distributor, where is that?
That's the top one, that's from Romco.
Mike, on the support that you gave from Romco?
Mm-hmm.
Need, none of those prices on there totaled to one sixty-four, four forty-three.
It should be the.
One of them's one hundred and eleven.
One is a pickup at the bottom. The one. Yeah, if you pull up, if you look at it. I have, you see, is that our good like Shelby, and they did put it in my picture?
Excuse me, Judge?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I have a question. Number one. Actually, we'll just say that this, this, you approved the purchasing equipment. How much money is left to do roads out of the twenty-three million? After the equipment? Huh? Is it twenty million? Nineteen million dollars, okay.
Where was the nine million going? I mean.
It's a little hard to follow, it's a little hard to follow, you're up there spinning out a lot of numbers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, well, what it is, we got twenty million dollars. Seventeen forty-seven, got seven hundred, seven, uh, seven million, seven hundred thousand. Then my equipment that I'm up here trying to get is a million fifty-nine, eight hundred. Then we have two seventy.
Seven million five?
No, a million fifty-nine dollars. I knocked out. I'm, I'm talking to my head about these numbers. Uh, anyway, and then the bridge that the crane ran into, that one's seventy-six thousand. And then the San Antonio Bridge where the pilings are being equipped, we got to pour concrete so we don't lose that bridge, and that's two hundred twenty-five thousand. So what it is, basically, that's nine million dollars you got in that little expense. You take that from the twenty million, we got, we'll say, ten million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, and change.
You have ten, you have ten million left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I understand, or I, I've been led to understand, that you were gonna let contracts.
We are, we got.
How much, uh, how much we talk about in contracts?
We don't know, we're working on it, that's where I gave the estimated cost of the two million dollars for seal coat.
Mike, I think we're, uh, looking for is this. A sheet here where you'll go back over your budget here and do just what you've just been kind of stating verbally. Show, right, here's your total budget. Here's how much goes into, uh, the work on seventeen forty-seven roads. Here's how much you're using to buy equipment. And then, I'm just wondering, and then here's how much we left, spend on contractors for roads.
Yeah. That is.
Is this?
I got ten million dollars.
How much?
Ten million nine.
Ten million nine, okay.
So, so then you minus nine million.
What he's got left is.
Nine million, okay.
Yeah.
Mike, Mike, okay.
Yes, sir.
The Senate Bill seventeen point seven is seven point seven million dollars, correct? Okay, is that all gonna be contracted?
Yeah, all of that's.
So here's, your contract is seven point seven million dollars.
Seven million dollars, yes, sir.
The seven point seven million was included into the nineteen million for the county road and bridge budget. But the, but what it is, the county, I guess, wanna say the county stake, seven point seven, seven point seven million into it. As we get our refund, I mean, our, our money back, it goes back into the.
Right, because it is figured in my budget.
Yeah, but, but the seven point seven is, is strictly for contract work on seventeen forty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Now, you, uh, in your numbers you want, I understand about the, okay, the, the vacuum water truck. Currently, we're paying what, a hundred dollars an hour just for that truck to be rented?
Yeah, it's a thousand dollars an hour and we're paying four hundred dollars.
Okay, and, and that truck actually runs percent of the time, maybe twenty percent, you would think?
Yes, we got an hour pre-trip, an hour post-trip that we pay.
Okay, so, but, you know, I'm saying it.
Is it a thousand a, an hour or a hundred an hour?
A hundred an hour, thousand a day.
Ten thousand a day?
Ten dollars a day.
And then you're, you're paying water thirty bucks a barrel or sixty bucks a barrel wherever you get it, and that truck holds a hundred and thirty barrels, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we're, we're renting a truck for a thousand dollars a day, uh, when you do your project most of, just so you can have water close by in your five days a week. So you're, you know, over a year, it's.
Oh, yeah, we could have bought this truck.
Could have bought the truck.
Yep.
On the verge of a story by law.
We got the water we gotta have anyway, whether we buy it or they buy it, the truck is the issue. We spend four thousand dollars.
Now, the, the distributor, uh, Mike, which to me, I don't think we need a commercial distributor, but I think the Etnire, cause neighboring counties have bought the same thing. And it, for the time you'd be using it, you would be needing the, all the bells and whistles, just be able to put out dust suppressant and emulsion oil. And you need to prepare a road if you wanted to, can't even decide to go back and do the.
Right, main thing, main thing I need the distributor for is when we put base on a road, we need to go back and put MC thirty on it, which is a primer for seal coat. And what that does, it acts as a dust suppressant, plus it keeps everything together until seal coat comes in and, and stick. Plus, the distributor does a dust suppressant, which is eighty-twenty, plus we can do seal coat.
That leads to my next question, because I've been talking with Tracy and on the county road like three twenty-six. And other roads we've worked on, that I've observed is that I have a concern that we're probably trying to go too fast. And I think we're spending good money after, have to go back and spend money again just to, to get it ready to go. Cause like on three twenty-six, when you, you're putting that with three quarters of dust on the road and just to fill in the holes and stuff. It's some of that, that's being contracted by, we got a motor grader doing that. Yesterday, you had talking, what, fifty trucks running?
Uh, we had about, uh, yeah, close to fifty.
And we get, what my concern is, and I was talking with Tracy last night, is that we have all these trucks and they're all backed up on the road. And we're almost creating our own safety hazard for our employees as well as the public coming by. And then after you get all this stuff laid down, we don't do nothing, we, we should be coming right back, like you say, with the oil, to hold that road together. As well as you done that on two twenty, three eighty-eight and two oh four.
And that's why I'm getting distributor, and what it is, that three twenty-six is in the seal coat program for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. So in May, I have to have all these roads ready because they're gonna start shooting.
Okay, in May, but right now, we're doing.
But you're not gonna do anything to that road until May?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna put the primer, the MC thirty, I have to contract it, I, I don't have a distributor.
Okay.
I need a distributor so I can do it ourselves.
I was gonna say, cause they won't be there.
No, they won't be there, no, shoot, no.
And that road will be gone in, in one month.
Yep.
And I'm thinking that, and I'm thinking that what you need to do is the, you know, we've got like four or five roads that you've been working on, and everything else has been neglected. Cause what you're trying to do, but I think you need to come to a whoa and go back to taking care of our other roads right now.
That's where we're at right now.
Till we get these in a, in a schedule. And we need to probably have a, as commissioners, maybe have a workshop to discuss some of these roads. Because we're not, I think we're, we need to be all on the same page and have a planning meeting.
Yeah, meeting.
I was gonna say, could I suggest a committee with citizens that actually live on the roads? You know, but what I'm saying, for the workshop, every.
Right, right, you mean open it up, yeah.
But what it is right now, the roads that we've got, that were put together are basically the bond roads that I did last year. And that's what I'm getting ready to seal, because we already put that material on there last year. If I wait another year, it's not gonna be there, we'll be in the same boat. That's why we're trying to get this list finished up, because most of those are from last year's bond money.
Well, I was.
Mike, I want to ask you a question, getting back to the distributor. I'm a fan of Bearcats, Russell Bearcat, I think that's the best machine. But my question for you is, does the machine you're looking at have a heated spray bar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you could put out-
Yeah, our motion right now, they dropped to where you only have to have it at a hundred fifty degrees. It's not like it used to be at three seventy-five.
Just personally, I'm very committed to that stuff.
Yeah, thank you. This is my part.
I, I'd like to look at the broad scope of what, what we're trying to accomplish here. I mean, you, you've given them the largest budget we've seen in years in this road and bridge. And bottom line, I'd like to know how many miles of road we're gonna end up getting for that. I keep hearing seven million point seven point seven on seventeen forty-seven, no offense, but it's going to address twelve miles worth of road. That is what we've been told. Twelve miles worth of road in our county. I got a copy of the paved road seal coat bill that you just voted seven hundred something thousand dollars for seal coat. And here are some numbers of what we're gonna seal coat. Point eleven, point eleven, point sixteen, point thirteen, point three-one. We're just doing little snippets.
That is existing asphalt that's in hopsing, that's in falsity, that's existing asphalt. We're assuming single course. We have this discussion every time we're here. That's a single course. And what we're doing is, there's a revised, uh, not revised, there's a new lift, that's thirteen fourteen. I have a fourteen fifteen that I'm offering, y'all free to get it. It's thirty-three point four miles. By the time this season's over in May, I should have almost sixty miles of roads paved.
I see a lot of neglecting at the rest of the roads. And I live on a road that was plowed up and nothing's been done to it. And it's not on any projection list to get anything done. So I, I, when I hear seven million dollars being spent on twelve miles of road, I have to ask what we're doing.
Sir, one of the things that, you know, you need equipment, see equipment. It certainly needs to be discussed. But the one thing that's never brought out when road and bridge makes a report is how many roads are we gonna build, how many roads did we build, or how many miles of roads did we build? Where did we build it? And it should be, you know, some kind of district between the four precincts. But I was, I would also suggest that there are two county roads, one in choke, and then there's where the halls live, where this commissioner's court went out there and plowed those roads up and then left them. Guarding those two particular roads, one of them is like almost seven mile long.
That one is scheduled. That one is scheduled.
It's scheduled.
Those two roads that we plowed up, you just walked away from. Well, I'm just talking about those two that I know of. We, we owe those people who live on those roads a road. I mean, we did it, and we didn't even go talk to the, to the people who live out there before we did it. We just done, one day they just showed up and did it.
Look at that list she's got, one twenty-seven is on that list. And that's one of those that were plowed up.
With, in your work group, we need to set a priority of work. But I think it would be nice for the people, especially those who live in the country, have a report that can be published in the newspaper once, once, once a week, whatever. You know, that we, we started X number of roads, we completed X number of miles. And this is where we did it. I mean, the people in this county, we've been taught, I've only lived here for eight years. But I, this, this subject of roads had been across, that we'd get kicked, I mean, a cannon, we'd get down the road for a year. And this is the biggest project we've ever had.
Here's where I wanna propose with the, that is, help us one. I think we have set in the month of November, a, uh, special meeting of commissioners for specifically to address road issues. And Mike, I want you to come in with a plan, very detailed plan, saying, here's what roads, you know, here's my annual plan, here are what roads. Of course, I know things will come up during the year, the dry effect, and some get smaller and up there, and you get rid of it. But here's what roads we're gonna use. Here's what, uh, we're gonna do, here's the kind of equipment we're gonna use to do, here's what, if it's contractor work, it's somebody doing it, here's anticipated that we'll build with contracts. And just kinda, you know, lay it all out for us so we can see.
Well, that, that's what I-
Here's what he's planning to do, and here's how much it will cost to do these projects.
See, what it sounds like is, what I've been doing is giving you all this paperwork that it's supposed to be put on the website, apparently it's not. So when they pull up the website, they don't see this, and Shelby made a motion to make sure it was posted. And if it was posted, nobody would have this, because they would've noticed three twenty, one twenty-seven. Uh, all the roads that were plowed up are getting repaired with the payment.
Well, that's, uh, I still think it'd be a good idea to have this open forum where you communicate to the citizens and to us. Uh, and you can field questions about things, and we can discuss the road strategy we're trying to employ. And, and, and to see mainly, that we're, well, let's see, well, how are the resources going to be allocated? Now, you've got X number of dollars in budget. Where do you see it going? You know, what's gonna have to pay from employees, what's gonna have to pay from materials for things you're doing yourself? What's left to pay contractors, what work can they accomplish? And, you know, really project it out instead of just, you know, I need this foot on its side of this, I need these people to do that. And, uh, you can kinda project what I'm asking for, or what, what we're doing with our budget, and how it's going to boost roads and where. And, uh, and by what means, contractor, own forces, whatever it is. And I think we could have that, I'll get that kind of understanding, everybody will feel better about it. And, uh, and it'll help you too, because you'll understand what guidance you get from commissioners about how to accomplish your goal. I mean, everybody wants to do the same thing, I know you too, you wanna make as many good miles of road in Karnes County and our county roads as you can. And, uh, but I just think, instead of piecing it all together, we can have just a real coordinated report and plan, present that to everybody, and let everybody answer the questions. That'd be my suggestion, and probably do that on a, at least a court level basis.
Yeah, 'cause what I've been doing is trying to keep more or less the equal amount of roads in each precinct. That's a hard thing to do, because like James's precinct, everybody's so scattered out over there that you get around Shelby's precinct and Karnes City, everybody's just right there, you know. So it's kinda hard to give equal road, but I'm trying my hardest to get us to it.
Well, I mean, you don't wanna get, in trying to be-
Equal.
You don't wanna get where you don't, logical plan. You know, if you got a logical plan and, and everybody can see eventually this can be done, and here's basically when. I think that makes more sense than saying, well, I can't spend that money, even though it makes sense to do it now because, because of the, you know.
So that, that's where I'm at right now. I've got the money already from last year's bond, that's what I'm covering up right now. Now, I've got the new proposal for what I'm gonna start after May. That will be presented to you, and that'll tell you what roads I'm proposing, just like I did the seal coat. I'm gonna propose what roads I'm gonna go in there and add base to. And then y'all will make the decision, yes or no.
Back in, like, back in December fifth, two thousand thirteen, we had this plan put together. And it was Senate Bill, Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven. And it shows us starting on County Road three twenty-six, starting November two thousand fourteen, and County Road one ninety-nine, starting in two thousand fourteen, eleven November, the twentieth round, November, November two thousand fourteen. And County Road one eighty-two, we started in December of two thousand fourteen. Is that still on schedule?
It's still on schedule.
No?
We already did the surveys.
No, we, we've done a couple of things. One is, we wanna do the County Road three twenty-six bridge widening. So we are electing to push three twenty-six behind the second one. Well, the, the schedule was for Tex- dot a year ago, but that was the plan at that point. Then Mike has also asked for some help with the, the bridge repair on two seventy-seven. So that one was bid and it's under construction. And then he's got the seal coat program that we're trying to get in, for the weather gets way too cold to do that. And then we're doing the three twenty-six bridge widening that's out for advertisement right now. So those three projects have basically pushed the whole schedule a couple of months. But three twenty-six isn't gonna end up being flipped with the first, uh, the first two would flip, and it'll come in second. But we're still on that, that plan set, we're just gonna be a couple of months behind because of these other projects.
So, uh, especially the equipment, do we need to piecemeal this thing, or do we go ahead? I mean, do you have to have a motion, or, or what is the, or commissioners, what do y'all lose?
Pardon, Mike, what did you, when we talked about purchasing?
Well, what it is, we're just gonna purchase, right now, what I'm looking at is getting distributor. That's the first thing I need right now. It's like a yard, that's the first thing. But what it is, is most of this stuff is gonna take six months before we can get it, because we gotta build it. It's not something that's sitting on a pile.
So you're not gonna do those things, they'll take months?
I gotta get, no, we got contract to do it. We got a contract to shoot the MC thirty.
And we're, and we're not, we don't wanna keep doing the contractor because you think it's not cost effective?
Well, what it is, is we can shoot it as soon as we finish it and not wait till you justify five miles of road to make it worthwhile for the contractor to do it. Because he charges motivation today.
Save on sooner, right. Save on sooner.
Back to my question a while ago, Mike, on the Ramco distributor, the Bearcat. On the quote from Ramco, it has three different prices for three different Bearcats.
Right.
And none of them match the amount that you show on your summary sheet.
The eight by twenty foot, that's why it's got the X. That one we're not using, we're using the sixteen foot bar. It's eight foot to sixteen foot, and we didn't need the twenty. And then, if you look down here at the bottom, the F one seventy-five pickup comes out to a hundred, I mean, the truck that goes, under the tank is sixty-five thousand.
Okay, all these components are on the byboard, the pickup also?
All of this, this whole package on the byboards.
Okay, 'cause some of them indicated on their quote, some of them-
Yeah, some of them, they're all byboards, everything's byboards.
Well, one, I think what's, what's throwing you on the Ramco bit is the distributor buys it up at one price, and anything threw in the truck that it sits on, and the other one is all completely used.
And the brush cutter's the same way, the brush cutter's one, and then the tractor's another. And then they'll package it together and then you pay them.
Just needed to be sure also that they were on byboards so-
Yeah, oh, yeah, everything here is byboards, yeah.
Well-
Like I said, half of this, uh, like the pickups, we're not gonna get there probably three to six months too. But they gotta bank, everything here-
All you're asking for is whenever it comes time authorization, that it is pre-authorized to get, come back to the court before you actually-
Well, I'm looking at go ahead and order like the pickups, the distributor, just have it at where I can go ahead and start getting this stuff ordered. That way you can start using.
I don't have, I don't have the ball with it, 'cause I know you need the equipment.
Yeah.
I'll make more some of the item number twelve out, is that it?
Which, which, which distributor?
The, number one?
Bearcat?
The one that, you said was good and there was-
What is the fact that one I said? So what's the difference between the Bearcat and the other's ten thousand, twelve thousand dollar difference? One of the sidebar shootout by themselves with a motor, is that what it does?
No, what it is, in case you put a Palmer in there, which I got with Ettna R, he said it's the same thing. It's just the design, the pump, you know, it, it's just kinda a whole bunch of other silly shit.
That's your motion.
I mean, that's why I let y'all-
So the Bearcat, that's like a motion.
So are we not, once you get the equipment, are we not gonna contract?
No, no, we're still-
We're still gonna contract?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. And one thing I do, if Shelby found out, I'd do these flag, because Shelby had to go flag. Shows you how bad the traffic is.
I would like to make one comment, and that'll be very brief. One of the things that we don't have out of the country, being living these dirt roads. None of them, I, I mean, I've talked to a lot of folks in the last few months, and there's no hope out there. They know that they're never gonna get a road, not ever.
Amen.
I mean, they, they, they would fight in these roads, and I mean, they're, they have no faith in our county government, absolutely zero. Because all they want is a road, so they get the HEB, go to the post office, go to their mailbox, or whatever, go to a doctor. But there is no hope out there. And, and in this commissioner's court, now you, and I'll give you a perfect example, right here, right now, this morning. And often, you've got an equipment list here, then you think, well, we're gonna divide or we're gonna piecemeal. Stop piecemealing stuff, that's what you've always done, just buy the damn equipment, let's get busy and, and, and get these roads built.
And just buy it.
We got a twenty million dollar budget, and he's talking about having sixty miles worth of road done at the end of the year. That, that, I, I look at bottom numbers. Biggest budget I've ever seen on the road and bridge ever, twenty-something million dollars. I thought it was twenty-three, you're saying twenty. And he's saying we're gonna get sixty miles worth of road done, so it's just bigger than-
Paved, paved roads. That's not base road, that's paved road.
We got over five hundred miles worth of road in this county, what's the rest of the, the rest of us to expect?
Gonna have lives gonna put on it, it's gonna be ready to go.
How many years? How many years has the lines on the-
They don't have a five-year pledge.
Three thirty was hauled out a couple of years ago, and it's just blowing away in the wind. And it's not on the seal coat list, it's not on the list.
We got three thirty, three oh three, two ninety-five, I believe in all of them they've done.
A snippet, a snippet, between the snippet here. Mike, this part-
I'm gonna have. All right. We're gonna need to take a bite on this, because there's been a motion, a second. Aside from that, I do wanna have, I'm gonna set, assuming everybody will come, a meeting at some point in November, and we're gonna start having at least quarterly a road and bridge meeting. Be nothing but discussing, planning, and putting some time deadle in seeing how expensive being allocated on the road. Okay? That'll be good for you, Mike, and that'll be good for everybody that has frustrations with the progress of the roads. And I understand, I do, that if we were going to fix it all in one year, we'd be looking at probably a three hundred million dollar budget. And, uh, you know, we don't, we're not gonna have that kind of money. But, uh, let's do, uh, let's do, try to illustrate better to people and discuss among the citizens and commissioners how this can be done, how the resource has been allocated, and take a look at how, what roads your project can do, and, and get some real investigations of what's going to be accomplished in a year. And maybe we can get a big county map on the grease board up there or something, and we can look at it, spook and see it. You know, I'm a visual learner, I like to see what I'm hearing about, you know, and a lot of times those are my work and so put here and that and that. You know, it annoys me in a hurry, I don't know what, I don't know what you're talking about.
I know last, I know last year in, in Precinct One, I went through your review report, and you spent a lot, right at a million dollars, a little over a million dollars for Precinct One. I know that, 'cause I, I did, I broke it all out.
Yeah, we're not even finished, we got one sixty-five, we gotta finish that.
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to, we're gonna figure out how to get a big map of the county that we can use to illustrate to people. And we can use that as kind of our planning board. And, uh, you can work on it before you come in, you've been having big maps of the county you can utilize, I'm not sure. We'll get one. And, uh, let's have a meeting and get that done. As far as, uh, this motion and second to approve of these equipment allocations have been a motion and second. All in favor?
For y'all both, can I ask a question? Uh, Mike on here, on the, uh, two thirty-five hundred heavy duties with utility boxes, you're requesting two with no trade-ins? I know you have one now, what's gonna be used for that one?
That three eleven is, that's what my next little deal was, uh, was to get three eleven and let courthouse maintenance use that. I know I've heard kinda back and forth on it, but my theory is they need a decent truck that's gonna do what it needs. Now, depending on what happens later, I'll have a place to park it, lock it up, and everything stays there. But how to drag it, everything out, and my idea was to go ahead and donate that truck to courthouse maintenance, but that's up to y'all. I'm leaving that up to y'all, just like I leave the roads and everything up. I'll bring the list, y'all will see.
Why am I still, still a good truck? I think it's decent, I think it's serviceable for, same to you, and I'll circuit it and bring it.
All right, motion passed.
All right, so we'll transfer that three eleven, watch the equipment comes in and we'll transfer it to you.
Mike, I have a question for you. When you, uh, can let make some of your vehicles, you know, like, trade them off or whatever, do you check to make sure that the county stops payment of the insurance?
Yes, sir. Not to, it needs some proper, oh, really. Not to, it needs some proper, oh, really, let me rephrase that. The way out, my practice is being in the ways to make everything else. The day that I pull the license plate off of it is the day everything dies on that truck.
Because I remember when I first took off this, back years ago, I checked, there was three vehicles that had been abandoned or destroyed or eliminated, that we've paid insurance for three years on. So I'm just telling you, it happened.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what we're probably doing. That's why a lot of these, trading them in, it might give us five hundred dollars, because there's somewhere out in the cover. I'll take what I can get.
Daryl, you didn't turn in an inventory every year of what you've used or didn't use?
Do I?
You didn't turn in an inventory every year of what was used or not used?
Yeah, that's, that's how I found out, we've paid insurance on three vehicles for three years that were no longer in existence.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to recuse just briefly for about three or four minutes, cultural trial.
Judge, can I, Judge, can I just ask one question now?
Wait a second.
We're going, pardon, welcome back.
And...
Made it!
So next chair on the office has had to leave. So we still have a warrant present. And we're gonna go to item number thirteen, which is one that Mr. Yarre put out, discuss approved, disapproved, purchase of a building located on North Brandon Street, which is adjacent to the building at 119 North Brandon Street, now owned by Carnage County and occupied by the nine eleven permanent apartments. Building has product by forty-two inch curb feet, can be used for office space, storage, and a shower area. Cost will be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus closing costs, and this was included in the year's budget for two thousand fourteen fifteen. Ms. Yarre?
All right, this, this building went on the market just before we, uh, finished completing our budget. And I was informed of it, I went and looked at it, and measured it, looked at what we could do. Wrote a few notes on it, presented it to Richard, especially him, and he has put the amount in there in our budget for this year. All right, what this, this building has the other offices right there. We have a telephone server in there, which can be, we can put conduits from that building to the other one, attach to that server. We have to put restrooms in it, so we've included some money here to do a little remodeling. The front part is a glass front facing the street. That is, I believe it's fourteen hundred square feet, can be divided up into probably four offices. Zane can do quite a bit of that work, divide it up. The back, the shop portion, there's a seven hundred foot area, which is a separate room in the back that used to be called goal room, and Mr. Cornell had his brass and his lay and something there. And so it's seven hundred foot separate area, which could be gold office, storage, separate from the shop. So the shop area will be about maybe fourteen hundred square feet, no, about two thousand square feet of the shop area, where Zane, our maintenance man, uses it, he can park his truck inside there and lock the door. So I think this is a reasonable purchase, it's something we can get into very quickly, more like quicker than building a new building. And stable, has a metal roof, solid wall, solid construction. It's air conditioned, the front office space is air conditioned, we just have to service air conditioning and refrigeration. Quickly divide it, so I think it's a, a good purchase for the, if we need some credit.
Is this building deemed in lieu of the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar record storage building, or?
Well, we can forego the record storage building at this time if we get that, that was...
Yes, because this is thirty dollars just per foot, this sounds like a...
And this record storage building back here, there was a, there was an area for a new office space in it, this is a very, you know, the maintenance office.
Right, well, that's what it sounded like, you were just shifting from building that to buying this.
So we, that was, uh, that was left in the budget, because eventually we will have to have a permanent record storage building, something that will have to be done sometime.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna, yeah, the thing we wanted to do, we buy this building, we're gonna do some planning about what's going in there. You know, we know we have an IT director coming, we have a, a financial manager, other things that are gonna be requiring some office space. We also know that sometime hopefully it's in the shirt, the jail will be completed. There's been a lot of movement of office space, and we're gonna have to, I think we need to kind of wait until we see how that settles out, and see how we can most efficiently locate all of the offices. And then, we should have enough office space, not only provide Zane with his space, but possibly even do a record storage over there. And if we can accomplish all that there, and then I need to build this building over here, I don't know. But this is a good, it's cheap space, look at it immediately, it sounds like something we can't lose. If eventually it turns out to be surplus, you're gonna sell it. So I, I think it's a pretty good idea. Anybody else have any questions? I've moved that we approve the purchase of this property. Some that we're putting in the contract, they want to have the inspection made, make sure the property meets, you know, the standards, and is not going to have some kind of big kind of foundation issue, roof issue, something like that. Okay? That's our motion.
I say...
All in favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen. Discuss approved, disapproved execution of unauthorized authorization and consent pool for oil regarding November thirty, two thousand ten oil and gas lease from Carnage County to Burlington Resources. This was sent to me by Craig Chinman's office. As is the case in a lot of the oil and gas leases, there are restrictions on pooling. This is written pre-keelburned, when we knew, I guess, what, what vehicles were required for pooling is concerned. And this, uh, this lease had very restrictive pooling allowance as far oil, basically limiting it to forty acres plus tolerance of ten percent. Most companies can't or won't operate with a forty acre pool limit on pooling for oil, and they're asking us to amend that. And they're asking us basically to agree that the, uh, the provisions relating to gas pooling shall also apply to oil. Anybody have any comments about that?
Well, just that you've redemned it, and you agree that it's, or you agree that something should be checked.
Well, you know, you never know.
I don't find objections to that.
Oh, you know, you always hate to get with all the company, two months away in the amount of acres they can have in a unit. If you think there's a danger of that all company can't simply drill a single unit well, whole oil is prompted by production, long periods of time, but a forty acre unit, I don't believe is realistic.
How many acres is this?
It's, it's small acres, it's not much, it's just...
One, ten?
As, as I recall, it's an acre or two. So I, I don't know that it's worth a, a big fight over it. You know, all the county's acreages are small.
Right, that's right.
And we don't have any big tracks, and we don't have a lot of leverage in dealing with oil and gas companies, because my recommendation would probably be just put us in the unit, put us in play, and get some money off of it, I'd probably agree to. So I'll move that we approve of, and we have a second. All in favor? Now, we're gonna have one executed by them yet, so probably send them both, Greg and Adam, sign and send them back on. All right, the next one, number fifteen, is to discuss approved, disapproved creating an administrative position for the oversight implementation of SP seventeen forty-seven projects in Carnage County to be funded from a liable administrative cost in SP seventeen forty-seven with ten percent matching funds from Carnage County. This, Ronnie Martin, Ronnie, would you like to make a point? He's a star actor or something, he's a celebrity too. Uh, Ronnie Metch is gonna explain this to us.
You should have a, one of these in your packet, I've prepared and put in there for you for review. What I'd like to do, to take this minute, and we're all familiar with the history behind seventeen forty-seven, I think probably Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven was the most important piece of legislation that came out of the past legislature session in reference to counties and county road construction and maintenance and rebuilding. Because this is a grant, it was funded to the county, and we've all heard the numbers put out this morning. The actual grant to Carnage County was seven million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Because Carnage County typically statewide, it required a twenty percent cash match from the county, but there was an allowable in the piece of legislation that allowed disadvantaged counties to match it at ten percent. So if you add your ten percent match on that, that's approximately an eight million, five hundred thousand dollar grant. Now, what I wanted to present to the court this morning, if you look at the handout, that top paragraph, and we won't go through this verbatim, but the very top paragraph is very specific in some issues that have to be met. And the last sentence in that paragraph says, "Many of the requirements are contained in the Texas Uniform Grant Management Standards, Texas Transportation Code, and Texas Administrative Code." And then in the body of the post-award agreement and implementation procedures, there are requirements for audit, there are requirements for expenditure reporting, there are requirements for completion of projects in a timely manner. And the end result is, if any of that is not completed, not complied with, and the grant management rules are not complied with, the county could be subject to reimbursing the state's money. So no, no one wants to see that happen. What I've discussed with the judge is a management position to be implemented by the county for oversight of this fund. You're, you're looking at a, a very substantial grant. And in that grant, there's an allowable expenditure, in the original piece of legislation, the allowable expenditure language said that you could use up to five percent of your award, not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. Now, for example, in a county that only received a hundred thousand dollar award, they could use five percent of that, be five thousand dollars. In our case, because our grant award was very substantial, five percent of that figure would be approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So they put a cap on it and said you can only use two hundred and fifty thousand. Five percent are with a cap of two hundred and fifty thousand. For administrative costs for the implementation of the grant program, I think it would be very advantageous to the county if they created a position and placed someone in that position for a number of things, a number of things that person could do. Number one, obviously, would be to make sure that the rules of the agreement are complied with. That, that would be the most important function of that position. The second thing that that person could do, that I think would be very important in the future, would be to communicate with the legislature, and I know we have a lobbyist for that purpose, but sometimes it's more important for constituents from a county, county person, to meet with those folks and talk to those folks and express our needs. So if we hope to have this funding to continue in the future, that person can be negotiated with our legislative representatives to hopefully continue the funding. And also, that person could be available to the court, at the court's direction, for any other responsibilities the court wanted to ask that person to do. There are a couple of points that I wanted to make as you go through this. I know we have a, an engineering firm who is doing, in my opinion, a real good job for the county in oversight of the payment of the bills and those kinds of things, but an issue that you get into there is if, if that person has to sign off on and approve that the work has been completed, and this requires that a licensed engineering firm certify that the work's been completed before an invoice is done and the county official signs off on it. What you get into in a situation like that is, they are a contractor in this grant, and you run into a conflict of interest for them to certify and to approve that their work is completed. And I'll be honest with you, I've discussed this with David, and David's concern is that he does not need to certify to the court that his work has been complete. Some county officials need to have that responsibility to certify to the court that his work has been completed, so there's no conflict of interest or no oversight on that portion of the contract. So with that, and I know that...
You say his portion of work, are you referring to the engineer?
Yes, the engineer's contracted portion of the grant. If we're paying underbank associates, their fee, underbank associates don't need to be the one that proves that their fees have been completed, their work to meet the requirement for the fees to be completed.
Well, shouldn't that be the road manager's business?
It should be. And I don't know right now if, how that's being done, Shelby, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware. I know, I'm assuming the judge is the person who signs off on the invoices when they're submitted to the state for reimbursement, the text officer reimbursing. I don't know if there's anyone between David and the judge that does any oversight on that.
Is the engineer's fees included in the five percent administrative allowance?
No, sir, their fee is a separate allowable fee. And LaWanna, when we were first putting this together, do you recall what that, I don't know the number on that thing, but it's more than five percent.
That's true. For the project.
For the project.
Is this five percent allowable for this administrative? Is that money that if you didn't use it for administrative, be used for road?
A project, yes, sir.
Okay.
But we approved Nate Smith and David Underbank as to be the administrator for our seventeen forty seven, huh?
Yes.
So we have an administrator. Right? Am I missing something?
I think we're right.
Was right there while we asked?
You know, what Ronnie's saying is, is got some merit. I'm willing to repair all the documents and everything else like that, but somebody at the county needs to review what I put together, and unless somebody else is appointed, it's probably gonna be the judge. So that's what I'm intending to do, is to get everything ready, turn it over to the judge. Somebody at the county needs to authorize payments to the contractor, to the engineer, to anybody else who's working on the different projects within the whole program. Now, the program does allow you to, and it's capped, like he said, at two hundred and fifty thousand, you can use some of that money for something other than a contractor or an engineer, which is an administrator, or administrative services. So if you've got people in the county and you want to try and reimburse part of their salary, that way you're allowed to do that. And if you choose not to do that, then you can put it all towards contractor, engineer, whatever, to get roads done. So you have choices.
But I would think that a road administrator should review all invoices and review all work, inspect all work prior to signing off on anything that the candidate signed. He's out there in the field, he should, he should know. In my opinion, I mean, we're paying him a handsome salary currently now, and to me, it's something that, that should be part of his job assignment. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't think we need to hire another administrator to do something that we should be doing already.
So how do we, like with the Historical Society, when we commission whoever, that when we get money from them, who signs off on the bills from the architect? We usually have someone, Pete, I think usually does that right. Does he kind of the same concept?
He's a man.
I do sign off on the bill. We do have Lorraine Davy hired to oversee that, so I don't have to, you know, figure out, she takes care of all the accounting and all that part, watches all that, so it's best for me. I don't want the job of signing off on the road administrator.
Well, I would think the road administrator will be able to sign off on those.
It goes back again to that, to this workshop that we need to have to specify some of these, and again, we have this, you got that, I can't even remember the committee, that transportation committee that's been formed also, they have, they have some input to this also. But I, my opinion is that the, my feeling is that the road administrator should be the one that has the final say, I mean-
Mike, what are you gonna say?
My thing is, we have a commissioner that can do it. Toby, Toby's involved a lot with road bridge. Toby can be reviewing them just as well as I can. I mean, that way two heads are better than one.
What I appreciate from that is, is let's keep this open for discussion when we have our road and bridge meeting, you know, let's see, let's analyze it. Everybody now heard about it, kind of know about it, and let's just discuss it. I don't think we need to take any action today. I saw Ronnie out of Nick and Wood. And let's just see if in the discussion within the road, the working session we're gonna have, so big on road and bridge, whether we can see if this makes sense to do or not. Two of, I think you're first.
I think there's a couple of initiatives, I'm going through my notes this morning, that we haven't really thought much about. One is on the ballot, it's Proposition One, where the state is going to have dedicated monies, don't know if any of them come to the county, county roads, if it's approved, if approved by the vote. The second portion is that there's also before the legislature, I believe, the issue of the sixty-three, nineteen sixty-three Attorney General Opinion, that the county roads, the money from the county roads, we replace that. Minerals under the county roads belong to the state, but the maintenance belongs to the county. If that, if that is reversed, then those monies can come to the county.
Future monies.
Future monies. Maybe we can, maybe we can get it backdated to nineteen sixty-three, I don't think that's gonna happen.
There's a-
But the bottom line is, you know, I'm just telling you from, suggesting to you from a resident, resident of the county, I mean, those are all administrative tasks, and Mike is a road builder. If he's gonna need some help administratively, if those two initiatives come to the mission, and I'd like to see Mike and his crew out there supervising building lots of roads.
I think we're all there. What needs to be determined is just how much work is involved in this administrative job.
How do other counties that gets the seventeen forty seven handle it? Have you checked with other counties?
Not since this proposal was made. I need to talk to, they've worked hard around Dewey and Metzger and Wilder, some others that more than I know.
Maybe the counties could pull together and save some dollars.
You might could also get somebody to volunteer, but if it's a neat one somewhere, which I'm looking at the bills.
Maybe. Are you volunteering?
If I'm too nice, I would.
We can't receive a proposal from the House in the past to administer this farce, so I don't know how many there are to administer for other counties, but we did see the proposal, at least twice from the House in the past, so we can administer this farce.
There are a big lot there. We kind of thought the time that David Brink was taking care of all that, and-
Do you want to remember what that was?
I thought, Pete, I thought that was for just putting together the application for the money.
I think it was. They came after the letter later on saying that, 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 Ben, they were so involved in putting in the application that they would help for a nominal fee for, they wanted that percent cut to administer the grant, just doing the paperwork, basically what you're doing.
They had a follow-up, but I didn't know whether they wanted the whole five percent or what.
Just one more, one more comment I have during the brief. I was here during the process of seventeen forty seven, and I think that all of us would agree that we're here, that had it not been for Ronnie Mitchell, we probably wouldn't have met the criteria on time and received the amount of money that we did, had it not been for Ronnie Mitchell. I think we would all agree on that.
Well, yeah, right. I wasn't here at the time, but I understood he did yeoman service for the county and getting that done, so I think, well, well, for me, with his abilities, think, it's just a question of, we gotta analyze position and see if, if it would be productive for us, you know. Everybody's saying, all right, we need another administrator in place, is it then much less money we get to spend on the road? And well, however, sometimes if you have someone probably administered, it'll be done better, and you'll actually get more productivity than you would just throwing the money at a county. So I, I think that's the analysis we have to make is, is setting up that, is it gonna be productive for us? Is it gonna make us get more good road in place or not? And that's, that's the question I think we need to answer. All right, so we'll table number fifteen, sixteen, and let's discuss this workshop we're gonna set up this, I say this month, November, and too late now for October. We'll do it in November, and let's see if that, Ronnie, you can be there and help us analyze that.
Mr. Ord, for your information, though, Garrett Coleman, who's out of Houston, he's agreed to chair that, he's the chairman of the County Fairness Committee, he's agreed to take that issue of the Attorney General Opinion on this year, so he's pushing that for all.
All right. Number seventeen. The captain's gonna give us some thought on this. I'll tell you basically, I got an email from LaWanna, oh gosh, a week or so ago, saying that in reviewing some, something to do with taxes, she had found that the, the total tax rate, we had said twenty-three cents for one hundred dollars, was not the number needed to support the budget. That she had been using some different models during the revision for budget meetings, she'd been using some different models of different tax rates to see what was necessary to produce the income needed to cover our budget, and a miscalculation occurred. And we're left with a sharp fall. We cannot modify the tax rate, and will not, we cannot do it, it's already set in stone, so we can't change that. We are left with very few alternatives. Fortunately, none of them, because of the financial conditions of the county, are going to create any kind of devastating effect on anything, but it, this error is going to lead us to using, I think, our original, we're gonna have to use some uncovered funds to pay for some of the capital expenditures we're making, such as construction of the EMS facility, a couple of things. I'm extremely perplexed by the whole thing from the law. It's not a time for me to patron blame or anything else, but I'm sorry it happened. Luckily, the financial conditions of the county and the revenues we're receiving are ample to cover it, but it's not something that should have happened. As far as the future goes, and how we avoid such an occurrence in the future, I can tell you that I get to two bold processes. One is to start the budget process sooner. We've got both county judge candidates here, and I've talked to both of you about this, that this is a process that needs, again, as soon as the election is over. The new county judge, we've been gathering up all our budget files and everything, none of which existed when I took office, when I walked in and was late March, and that's where the budget file was, and there wasn't one. In fact, there are no files here at this office. So it took me a while to get my feet on the ground, figure out what all needed to be done, and then work with LaWanna all summer trying to, you know, calculate out how this budget would work. So the process needs to start sooner, and we need to try to move up the hearing dates or anything, but we have public hearings on budget tax rate for reasons. That is, if we want input from the public, and we got, we made significant modifications to our original proposed budget because of public input. And so it's, that's why it's supposed to work. We're not just supposed to be having those hearings for granted, and, you know, when we're done, we say, well, that's very nice, we're gonna do what we wanna do. So there are gonna be modifications made, I assume, if not every time, certainly sometimes, after the public hearings. And so we have to be flexible enough to get those modifications done and done accurately. The other thing that we've got in place in this nature is we have a financial manager for the county that will assist the county judge in the budget process, along with the , and this will, you know, when you have two sets of educated finance wise on a budget, you're much more likely to catch any kind of erroneous number or something like that that's placed into the budget. So, pardon me. With that, I'm gonna present, or give it to LaWanna, LaWanna, from here.
Okay, what I have given you all on the front page is the taxable valuation as certified by the appraisal district of the seven million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, seven million, one hundred and eighty-one million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the adopted tax rate at twenty-three cents. The three columns on the right side shows you the allocation of that twenty-three cents. The interest in sinking and the road and bridge special funds are calculated during the tax rate calculation, and you cannot deviate from those. You take those two amounts from the twenty-three cents, and you're left with eighteen cents and change allocated available for maintenance and operation. Unfortunately, during all the changes during the budget after the public hearings, instead of twenty-three cents, the total allocation equaled twenty-six cents. That left for a difference in monies available for M and O at two point one million dollars. We'd already said part of that M and O monies was going to be from the jail bond proceeds. You go onto page two, you'll show the allocation in the budget as filed on September twenty-six of revenues, expenses, and the net differences. Based on that as filed, the total being used from unencumbered funds was three million from road and bridge regular, and two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from the general fund. That would get it to balance with the allocation of the ad valorem taxes and other revenue On the third page is how it would be with the correct allocation of the eighteen plus cents for M and O. Generals ad valorem taxes allocated would be nine million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, as opposed to the twelve million, seventy-five thousand, seven oh nine thirty-one on the previous page. Emergency management would stay the same, road and bridge would remain constant, and the library would decrease less than a thousand of cents. You look at the bottom, the short, total shortfall for M and O is five million, five million, four fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. That can be covered from the three million dollars that was in the original budget as filed from road and bridge regular, and then the difference of two million, four hundred and fifty-four, two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents from the general fund, which of that, one million, four hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-three cents is the remaining jail bond proceeds. And then if we take a portion of the EMS facility out of unencumbered balance, and part of it out of the tax revenues, that will balance out the adjusted figures.
May I ask, why was it figured on twenty-six cents when we were given twenty-three cents?
It was an error because there were multiple windows open, and when I printed the last copy, the twenty-six cent window got printed instead of the twenty-three cents.
What do you mean there were multiple windows?
On my computer, I had multiple spreadsheets open, open trying to get to the bottom line.
You're gonna use this kind of thing to compute the tax rate?
I'm not talking about computing the tax rate, I'm talking about allocating the tax rate. Tax rate's calculated by the tax software program in the tax office. But we were opting to go above the effective or the rollback rates.
So it was in your department, right?
Correct.
Not the tax office, tax office was totally out of this.
Yes.
Totally an accounting.
Well, I couldn't understand where the twenty-six cents was coming in when we were giving twenty-three, but Juana.
Before the twenty.
Yeah.
Three point four to five to six, we're carrying up to the thirty because of the opposition of the public hearing on the thirty cents.
I think, I think the only approach viable for this is to utilize the additional unencumbered funds on the EMS facility. You know, the, the truth matter is, you know, I had no intention of doing it like this. But I think since it would be utilizing funds on capital improvement, building something that lasts, I don't have any particular objection to it. But our intention was to have the budget balanced as is. That's what we were trying to do. In order, in order to comply with the statute, we're going to have to amend our budget. And to keep the same budgetary expenditures in place, the only way to do it is to use some unencumbered funds. And those are from the jail bonds sales and from the, which are already sold, and from the, the general fund, the unencumbered assumptions paid for. We're lucky at this one time that the, the county's tax revenues will probably still add to the unencumbered fund balance for this year. My understanding is that when the supplemental tax statements are issued and paid, that will have substantially more revenue than we projected. Also, sales tax revenues and other fees, Juan is assuring me she estimated those extremely conservatively. And is fully expecting to have all those numbers surpassed as they have been the last several, or several years. So I know that it does not create any kind of financial crisis, but it does say, how do we avoid doing this again? And our response is we start the budget process sooner and we have another set of eyes working on it, which will be the financial manager.
So how much are we talking about having to amend?
That's about a million and something. It would be two point one and something million, but we have those unencumbered bond funds from the sale of the jail bond.
I thought we'd used all the bond money in the jails before.
But we have not used at all.
Okay.
It's just not in investments. It's into the general fund, it's not separated because it had to be spent.
Can you use, can you legally use those if they're not used to use them for something else?
Yes. They're unencumbered funds, they're not.
No, the bond, bond that's set aside for bonds.
Those bond monies are being used for the construction of the jail.
So actually, if you look at it that way, we're going to have to go over two point one, five, four million dollars in unencumbered funds. But we're going to be using those unencumbered funds that are bond funds to pay for jail instead of getting out of our general account, instead of using tax revenues for it. That's the best way I can explain it, which is not terribly.
What would be the bottom dollar coming out of unencumbered funds?
The total amount, including those that we used to pay for Road and Bridge earlier this year is, that's worth five million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, thirty-eight cents. That was to cover the reduction we had for Road and Bridge where we cut the M and O allocation for Road and Bridge by ten million. But there is a lot of Road and Bridge fund money that was in unencumbered funds that had not been used in prior years, just stacking up. So we took, you know, three million from general Road and Bridge and two million for Road and Bridge Special and use that to make up for some of the cut in general M and O allocation we had made for Road and Bridge. Well, that's, that's how it all happened. It's all it sounds like, you know, it's using unencumbered funds, all that, it kind of sounds like a shell game. It doesn't result in county losing money or anything of that nature, but it does result in the county not having as much additional savings as the county would. That's what it basically means. And so, you know, that's really, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What would be that bottom figure coming out of that unencumbered funds?
The unencumbered funds, the total amount, count Road and Bridge and everything.
But there's a bottom figure.
Yeah, five million.
Million dollars?
Yeah.
Million what?
No, he's talking about just this incident.
Oh, the extra unencumbered funds because of the error.
Yeah.
Okay.
A million forty-eight thousand, five hundred.
Million, one million, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty.
But part of that is the bond.
It's, it's, man, I think it's two million, four fifty-four to thirteen. Yeah, we can do this one of three ways. Everybody needs to digest it more and understand it more. Put it off, go to the next meeting, or if you want to go ahead and make a motion.
Let's get it over with. I made the motion approved seventeen and presented. Eighteen, I'm assuming eighteen.
On favor? All right. Next. Mike, do you have a, a trigger for September?
Seventeen and eighteen altogether?
Yes. Yeah, seventeen was kind of the introduction to it, eighteen was the actual motion.
No, Juan, I'm still working on the outside investments, but I did want to say a few things.
Just a minute.
Real quick, just the county Christmas party is scheduled for December twelfth. We did do some biometric screening last Friday. We only had twenty-three people out of our hundred insured people to participate in that, I was kind of disappointed in it. Jess Williams, right now, is working with the doctor out of Victoria to do like a mobile unit where we could do that more often. Hopefully, we can get more people to participate. Yes, it does your cholesterol level, blood pressure, yes. Right.
Correct.
Correct, correct. So we're hoping to get that a little bit more active. I am making an offer today on some, I'm an applicant for my deputy treasurer's position. Shelby and I did interviews on Wednesday, we had five very good applicants. Yeah, it was very hard to do. And we're going to start the conversion with Tyler Technology. Next Friday is payday and in the following week, we're going to be doing a dummy payroll with that previous payrolls information. So we really need to get everyone on, on a time clock plus. And right now, the only department that's not consistently on it is EMS and I am working with Dennis, Dennis on that one. As soon as we pay that bill today, they'll mail us, they'll ship us that other pin pad. We are doing another pin pad for Zane and his people to use. We may wait until it goes into the other bill, the new building, instead of installing it here and then moving it, kind of thing. But we can do like time sheets in the future, sort of thing for them too. So we're working on that, so, thank you.
All right, the bill.
If you have any interest, if you go to page two.
This is number twenty, okay.
Under apartment four oh nine, non-departmental, on our payments to Alonso, Bart Gries, Irvine and Palmer, the independent monitors. The eleven thousand, one hundred dollars is the final billing on the fiscal year thirteen audit. The next entry of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine is the final billing on the bank reconciliation project through September thirtieth of two thousand thirteen. In the bottom section under judicial, you will see a payment of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and a nickel. That is the county's contribution towards fiscal year fifteen's operations of the district attorney's office. The next to the last entry of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents is Karnes County's prorated budgetary contribution for the district court coordinator's office. On page three, two thirds of the way down under capital outlay, individual payments to daily and spares, eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents towards the EMS facility. The final payment on the annex North Parking Lot, seven thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety cents, which I'll approve that modification earlier. The jail tower project, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and a penny. The jail facility, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And the price towards our financial conversion is seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then as Mike mentioned, we have a new keypad coming from Time Clock Plus as well as our renewal for this fiscal year, three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. And then the cop sync licensing fee for the sheriff's department, three thousand, fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents. On page four, under EMS, you will see an expense payable to Caldwell Automotive Partners, thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. That's for the emergency response vehicle in this year's budget. On page five, in the first section, you will see the purchase of four new vehicles and the associated equipment in the sheriff's department of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty cents. Those are all also sold by Caldwell Automotive Partners. You go to page eight, under Road and Bridge, there's expenditure to Naismith Engineering, eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the engineering on County Road two seventy-seven Bridge. And then on page nine is another payment to Naismith in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and five dollars and eight cents for engineering on the widening of the Escondido Bridge. Page ten, out of the road bridge special monies, we have a payment of thirty-four thousand, forty-seven dollars for the sealed closed resurfacing program. And then we also have a payment to Naismith Engineering of a hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents on the Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven implementation. Total payments for this cycle, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
David, what is Road, I mean, what is the SP seventeen forty-seven implementation charge?
That's, that's for the work on the three roads that are on the prioritized list.
For engineering?
That's, yeah, that's the geotechnical investigation, the surveying, putting together the plan, the base maps, and starting in on the design for the three roads.
So there's more to that?
Yes, yes.
We have, have we submitted prior invoices ready?
To the state, no, we're getting ready to. This next, around the fifteenth and twenty-fifth, right before Thanksgiving.
So the one invoice that we have that I haven't been looking at that was done in, thanks, David. Worked for April two thousand and fourteen through August, that's been submitted.
That one will get submitted this next time, that's right. Both, both of the three twenty-six, both the three twenty-six bridge widening and the Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven stuff, Mike wants to push through the state grant.
Come at questions. Motion to pay.
I'll make a motion, please, Bill.
Second. On the favor. All right, we have a couple supplemental agenda items. Make sure he gets where he's going. Make sure he goes to where he's supposed to get, he don't do it. Number one on the supplemental notice is review and approve, disapprove Karnes County historical commission membership roster. Sue, do you have anything on that? I know I've sent a roster of membership.
I have the, the list that we had suggested. Do you have it?
I do, I think I've got it. Is it in my folder?
It's in the, it's in the very back.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a paper copy. Yeah, we are required.
Here is the list. Pete, do you have it, do you have it?
Yeah.
It's a list of twenty people, like that. All moves that we approve of this membership list.
Uh, second, second.
On favor? Last, discuss approve, disapprove amendment to the contract with GEO to allow for expansion, pardon me, of the immigration detention center. We have someone from GEO here, believe, yes, sir. We'll talk, tell us what this is all about.
Sure. I'm Rick, Vice Secretary, Vice President of GEO. I think that you guys know, we've been in the county now since nineteen ninety-eight before we started with the purchase of the correctional center for Bobby Ross.
If you could, is there a microphone there?
Yeah, there it is.
No, thanks.
Anyways, basically what we're wanting to do, we have the six hundred beds residential center now, capacity has been reduced to five hundred and thirty units because it is housing families, female, the mothers and children right now. Prior to the conversion, it was housing all males. What we're wanting to do is to seek your approval to work with government to expand it up to a two thousand bed, all male facility. If it's used for the civil, for the residential, the mothers and the children, the actual census would be somewhere around sixteen now, because the square footage requirements are different for the families versus the males. Anyway, in consideration for that, we will continue to offer up the thirty-three beds at the old correctional facility, not the old, the Karnes Correctional Facility, value of which is somewhere between five hundred and fifty and six hundred thousand dollars a year to the county. And increase the administrative fee because of the increased workload on the county to one hundred thousand dollars for the residential center. That's on top of the property taxes that we're paying. That's on top of the property taxes that we're paying. Provides good paying jobs to the county and a clean industry.
Okay.
So you'd be building a new facility next to the?
Oh, sir, expanded the existing. Yes, sir.
Do you have sufficient acreage out there?
Yes, sir.
We won't be buying up any additional land?
No, sir.
Now, one of the things that happened, I know in the initial announcement was made that it would be housing women and children instead of just the males, there was some consternation over whether the area schools or health facilities or anything like that can be taxed, not taxed, but I mean, could be.
A burden.
A burden. And can you tell us how that's handled?
Yes, sir. Uh, in commission, I think we've got to cut the commission of that already. Uh, we have our own school, we have a charter school that operates out there, but we don't have that. Uh, it's basically paid group law. There is no burden on the community schools. Uh, there's no burden on the community healthcare facilities, unless we have to take somebody out to mom and dad's or like anybody, when we type it. Anyway, there is no burden on the community. None of these people are released in the community. This morning, we had a deportation trial, where they brought back their own countries. Uh, we had Barbie too leave, but they leave out of San Antonio.
Can you guarantee none of them will be gone to that? Do you have it afforded?
No.
So you can't guarantee?
No, I can't guarantee. But if they're released, they're going to be released to somebody in your community who paid the money to buy them.
Oh, that's okay. Like a bail bond.
Marie?
Sir, I think it might be for consideration that before this be approved, that you have a need for public comment. Because we're adding, we're adding another fifteen hundred.
Sometimes the population marks.
Illegals for lack of better word, that will be populated here in the county, is that correct?
Other counties did want.
Correct. Is that correct?
It's, it's going to actually increase the capacity of the facility by fourteen hundred.
Okay. Just to be clarified, who's it going to house there? Are they going to be males and women and children, or?
The, the plan with immigration right now would be to expand the family unit, which would take us up to around sixteen hundred beds with the families, just like we have right now with the mothers and the children.
The only mothers and children are males also?
It could be males if there is a conversion.
It could change.
Yeah.
It changes at your discretion, whatever you.
No, if the government's discretion. If the government's discretion.
It could be one of them.
So Mr. Reed, in other words, you could have families in one area, and then you could have males in the other area, just leave all families.
One or the other.
One or the other.
One or the other.
I think Mr. Yarder's idea is absolutely perfect. We went to the, the assembly last night, as well as Shelby and several people here to the border security program. It was a wonderful program done in the Wilson County, Wilson's Fortsville auditorium. And these topics came up, and you people need to watch what their presentation was. You need to see, there were three speakers, and they were absolutely fabulous on what is happening around us and happening very close to us. And I can tell you regarding the very high student that they're talking about, when the concept came up that they were being educated by charter schools, and that the taxpayers were paying for that, the crowd went into an uproar scream, because the people are really, really tired of their tax dollars being funded in this form and fashion. And I think the people of the county have a right to speak on it before you vote in to approve anything of this nature.
I agree.
I agree.
We make one offhanded comment, and this is not meant to jest, but maybe, you know, we could send a letter to Mr. Obama, I mean, Mr. Our President, and maybe we can house him in his backyard, since his problem, as he sees it, so it's a problem for our county.
Well.
Who, who signed the contract to, for us to house, to house the immigration here? Who signed the contract? Did our commissioners, or who? The court, the previous court? Yeah.
I didn't look, not this one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sitting right here, guys.
Okay, why did other counties turn this away? These were supposed to, I heard on the news, Dallas County was glad that we took it, because they were, they're not going to put their immigration there now, so.
I guess my, my thought was this. We had long since agreed to house immigrant detainees here in this county. They were males, men. And it seemed to me that the risk factor of housing, you know, illegal immigrant, broken males here, and the potential problems that should come out of that, were much higher than housing women and children who do not, if any of them have played in the facilities, I haven't heard anything about it. Uh, I think your, the, the differences, there's no additional burden on the community, as he was saying. And so that, to me, is not a huge problem. You know, we don't set immigration policy, we can't set it, except by the national government. This problem, all these people fleeing these countries and coming up here, is something I think each one of us, we've got to weigh it both ways. We weigh it, it's what the effect it has on our country, but these are people, you know, that weren't born in privilege or anything like us. And what they're doing, I'm not justifying that, they need to go back where they came from and try to straighten out their own country. But when they're up here, they're here. And I don't think any of us would make a different decision than they do if we were living in El Salvador, and we were trying to raise children. I think we'd be on the first ground bus or wherever it is they take to get us here.
So you're suggesting we don't break the law?
No, I'm, well, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting we probably would.
It is a burden on the community, because there's protesters out there on a regular basis, and Mr. Bill in a way addressed that last night.
Yeah, well, there, there are protesters out there, primarily from groups like Mala, who don't want those people detained anywhere. They want them to just released into the world.
But my question is, is this why we're having to expand this facility, because this contract was entered for these families? Is that why we're having to? I mean, the, no, the facility, expand the facility.
There, there is additional need in the country right now to detain more families.
Over Washington.
Well, Billy's building some more stuff there by that man.
It's actually, it's for the same thing, but that is a temporary facility. Those are in trailer houses.
But they said they're going to add to it.
Well, they're built, the only permanent building that Billy's going to be a gymnasium.
So we're adding the additional facility to house more family?
I think the contract, the original contract we signed with this facility, and it was this long before any of us knew what's coming out of the cracks immigration-wise or anything else, requires us to cooperate with them and sign additional agreements with GEO. Those aren't necessary for them to carry on their, whatever it is, their contractual relations with the government. I don't know if we'd be in breach of that agreement or not. I haven't done any research on it. To me, it's just kind of a, you know, it's not my decision if, if Commissioner Court doesn't want to do it, they're going to have to. But we're being, we'll be compensated, the county will be compensated another hundred thousand dollars per year. Of course, us big jail will make a lot more money than that, of course, particularly that's what their business is. Sheriff, if you, if you, at the same last die, you made a comment, you cap, you know, I say you captured, you recovered some children that had, were being part of human smuggling. And if you would catch, I mean, where do you take them then? You take them right back, do you just take them to jail and deposit them?
Anytime we have a bailout here in Karnes County, we just detain them. We cannot put them in our county jail. So what I do, as soon as we detain them, and we know how many we have in custody, is we make a phone call to Border Patrol, and we let them know what we have. Usually, and hopefully, in about forty-five minutes, an hour, they'll call you and let you know where they're, they're coming from. The last time I had a problem with them is I was told that, you know, maybe they could help me. So, you know, I had that problem with Border Patrol, but when I address it to ICE, you know, they're the ones that got me the help. I will say that, but that's what we do. We have juveniles or adults, we have to detain them till they come from, we cannot keep them in our facility.
So we can't take the kids over to jail and say, go outside of Ford, I'm going to keyhole them?
No.
Well, explain the bailout to us.
The bailout is, what I'm talking about is if you have a vehicle that's coming down the highway, okay? And a lot of the times when you have these vehicles with illegal immigrants, and they see a patrol car of any kind, they bail out, they start running through these fence areas, and, you know, we have to, you know, we'll, we'll wait, we'll call for backup, and then we'll try to get them all in custody, and then call Border Patrol.
And we're not talking about being bailed out of one of your.
No, no, not, no, not that.
Nobody's, nobody's bailed out of.
Not through the sheriff's office, no, sir.
I think what Mr. Wosky was talking about, or someone made a comment about Dallas County, I think every, at the time when all this was starting to come about, that juveniles and, and parents were coming into the country, everybody was under an assumption that the county governments would have to take care of them and defend it, but that, that's proven not to be the case. It's all on a contract basis, and that's what this facility does. Only, only, anything, anything that happens inside the facility is handled inside the facility.
Right, it's handled by.
Even crime or whatever.
It's very fun, they can be bonded out by anybody around here, and if they're bonded out, they do go into our local systems.
But I don't. How do they get bonded out?
They can bond that. Rose, how many do you have bonded to Karnes County? Roses are.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we've not had any bonded to Karnes County. Um, the bond outs are coming from the lawyers out of Waco, Dallas area, and they're taking away.
So like, somebody can pay and bond?
No. No, they bond them to families that they were originally trying to come over to get with, and their families are trying to, you know, reunite with them, so they'll, a lawyer will help bond them out to get them reunited with the family, so they can go through the process of becoming legal.
Sure.
So they don't try to help them get back to their country, they're bonding them to stay here for tax, take care of, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, I mean, it, it just depends, you know?
You know, I think there's just so many uncertainties in, in this thing, it's like, it might be, we don't know, it can change, all these different aspects. You know, I suggest that we deal with like what we've got going on right now, and take care of that, and, and, and without going to get more. I mean, we, we're not sure what these uncertainties are. I don't think we should be stepping into something else.
Regardless of, I mean, are y'all going to still plan to increase locally, locally?
Yeah, I mean, are you, I mean, if the, if the commission courts say we're not really in favor?
We're tipped.
Yeah.
Excuse me, we, we have a private conversation up here, we're not going to hear it.
Well, everybody's talking, same town's trying to get a question.
The question was, do they need our approval in order to construct this additional, or this additional facility? And is Android yes?
One of the, one of the things I think that needs to be mentioned here, it's not just Mexicans that are being, are from South Dakota.
OTM.
From wherever, from the south, central border. They're also, they're also arresting and putting in these facilities individuals from southeast Asian, that the traffic's starting to increase there, and we're talking about ISIS. Starting to get people from China, and they're coming through the fences too. They're going into this facility. They could.
They could.
They could.
Right there with.
It's on the increase, and you need to have the presentation, Shelby, brought to our county, so these people can be informed, Shelby. They need to bring the presentation that we watched last night to this county, and it shows you the charts of the Afghanistan, they seized twenty-five thousand dollars worth of Middle Eastern money just this past year being brought across the border. It's not that the, from our local border, people that are coming across, the surge is going upward from people from other countries, in a big way.
I think it was, I think it would be approved to at least have a, a public forum, a public comment before this is approved, or considered approved, and just through by the commission courts.
I'm, I'm sensing.
What's in the contract, George Botler?
I'm, I'm sensing from the people here that they don't want to do it. And so, I think what we ought to do, perhaps, if you guys want to continue, is try to get this thing done, let me know, and we'll set up a public hearing specifically for this, get public comment, and, you know, we may, I don't know who all might come, you know, this is a public hearing, and we did have it on a supplemental agenda, but I think people feel like we need to have more information. And Ms. Hall, like if we set a public hearing, we do set a public hearing on this, for this issue, you can talk to some people that, that presented that that other thing, and maybe they want to come up here and present here.
And have it maybe applied for more people?
And, and there may be people, you know, your group may want to present this, comments, and who knows? Anybody wants to can come present.
I can assure you, you'll need the, the off court, because it was, it was quite.
Very, very crowded.
Well, well.
We may have to have it a different location, but I'll, you know, I think, my thought is we'll table this for now, and then let's have, we'll have you tell us if you want to keep presenting it, and you understand how we're going to go about it. All right? Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Get it, Pete?
All right, probably to approach our route to date it on the half of.
Sure, sure.
Okay. His first charge, September thirtieth.
Can you use a microphone?
You don't want me speaking, if I get close and.
On September thirtieth, you hear me?
I can't hear.
All right, can you hear me now? All right, on September thirtieth, the first meeting that just came up, James Valasquez went out to the facility and had tours. Two GEO administrative personnel from, from the corn city facility and GEO Texas and Florida Conference Commission, James Valasquez, P T R, Detroit, presently operating ICE detective facility on foreign market road eleven forty-four, Quonset, Texas. Today, they reported that there are five hundred and thirty-two persons held in the facility. These are mostly mothers with small children. We saw an estimated one hundred children between the ages of two and seven years of age. There were a number of teenager children, maybe fifty playing in a courtyard. We're only reporting what we saw. Many of the small children were in classrooms with a teacher and an assistant. We were shown a room stocked with clothes and accessories from which new detainees are allowed to select items for themselves. Items in this room were reported to be bought from local merchants like Walmart and Dollar General. We're also shown a six thousand square foot medical facility, which has exam room, dental chairs, and X-ray machines to screen for TV, and also pharmacy storage room stocked with supplies. Living facilities are equipped with eight bunk beds, a telephone, a TV, a bathroom, and tables and chairs with some entertainment equipment. There are washers and dryers available for use by detainees, by the detainees. Food and drinks are available twenty-four hours a day. We were told that detainees spend an average of twenty-three days in the facility. The staff of the highest facility informed by GEO was reported to be a hundred and eighty-nine. Staff consists of administrative, clerical, custodial, maintenance, teachers, and a full medical staff. Medical includes physicians, physician assistants, tech support, psychologists, psychiatrists, and dental technicians. The facility at Corn City was built to house male immigrant detainees, but was the first one of its kinds to be converted to a family-type housing facility. This was done to accommodate the increased influx of so many adolescents and younger persons during the last year. We were told that most of the detainees were from Honduras, Guatemala, and El Salvador. We're also told that many of them arrive at the Texas border, Texas-Mexico border by You don't know for sure, they said some of them may be paid passengers, some of them may be just baggage cart passengers. Facility at Corn City, detainees are represented by legal advisors who volunteer on a pro-life basis, so they have several of them come here and question.
I've got a question for Pete. Do you see anything wrong with the picture that you're hanging right here? Anything at all? That's all good.
Maurice, I'm reading the report that I'm going to be giving a tour.
But let me, let me.
I'll make a comment when I finish. I'll make a comment when I finish.
Because I would like to follow that up.
The Geo facility is managed and administered by a private company under federal contract with the U.S. Immigration Service. Karnes County is required to do some administration on the contracts at present. We were told that Karnes County was paid ten thousand dollars annually for its services. Karnes County is being asked to amend our contract with Geo to modify an enlarged prison facility. Modifications will increase the facility capacity to twelve hundred detainees. This will include additional seven hundred beds and another large courtyard for outside exercise facilities. Told expansions are estimated to cost thirty million dollars, which would be added to our property title. With Geo, we increased local employment by a hundred forty personnel. ICE federal employee numbers will increase by fifteen. This is just my observation of the facility on that day. Uh, and on that day, we were told that Karnes County, they were proposing to increase the fee to fifty thousand dollars. After that, I came back and I discussed this with Judge Butler, we discussed what are the liabilities, uh, some facilities get much more paid than this for having them in their area. We don't know, some, some facilities get much more paid than, than they were offering us, is what Judge Butler had heard. He said he was going to discuss it and talk about it, but I, I reported what I saw out there the day I went out there and what they told me. And so I wrote up a report that day.
And I'll, I'll say, I did investigate any issue and what we found is that the counties that are being paid more are paying taxes on it and that the NIP is basically the same thing. Some counties have been getting paid a certain hundred thousand dollars, uh, for these facilities on an annual basis, but they're also not, Geo's not paying taxes for this, and we do, so it's kind of washed. Maurice?
Listen, I have a comment about this. You're talking about all the nice things that these young, uh, these families and these children have in this facility over here. They've got food twenty-four seven, they've got television, they've got sports facilities, they've got baths and showers. And you go right here to Corn City, or Kennedy, and you can find families and kids over here that don't have a meal tonight, they don't have a place to take a shower, they don't have television and we're going to, and we're going to add some more kids over here, or some, add some males? I think that we need to take a step backwards and take a good look instead of supporting that person up in White House and the half-baked plans and, and supporting these people from South America. We need to put them on a boat and send them right back where they came from and quit, and quit trying to build some kind of Disneyland out here. And if we're going to take care of people, why don't we start with people we have right here in this county?
Water only.
That's, that's a good question.
I, I said that, I said that a long time ago. Then my only, my main objection to that place was that our people in our county, our kids do not have the same niceties as the illegal aliens out there.
There are plenty of poor people here in Karnes County and you're probably right, Maurice, probably don't take care of the people.
We don't.
Uh, you know, I, I know that this is such a, such a highly charged issue and, and I know good people who think differently about it. I mean, there, there's, it's not one way or another, you know, I, uh, I guess I'm a little softy or something because I just feel like, you know, how we treat the people who have the least in this world, you know, that's how, how we treat other people, you know, with, how you treat the powerful and the well-connected, that's, that doesn't say anything about us. Uh, what we do, what speaks that, what kind of people we are, is how do we treat the people that are the least, or the least of these, I think is the word Jesus used. How do we treat them? Now, isn't that an indication of how we feel about him? That's the way I always, aren't it?
And I, and I agree with you, but we don't make an effort. I mean, we're talking about roads, we talked about the courthouse, we talked about everything in this. But the only, and I can probably count in this room, there's probably about five of us that show up on the first Monday of every month and hand out food to people that show up.
That's right. Those are efforts to be committed.
But we don't go out here and take care of the people in our own county, much less the people in the United States. We spend billions and billions and billions of dollars supporting the whole damn world, including ISIS and everybody else, they're building swimming pools and all kinds of things over in Southeast Asia, you know, and we're sitting over here putting the bill. You know, something's wrong with this country and somewhere, somebody's got to say, we've had enough.
I want to add something. I, I taught school in the country, uh, speaking in a school district for thirty years and I want to say that, you know, I'm around and about town a lot and I was in Walmart one day shopping just as this is open and there were about eight carts shrink wrapped all the way as high as it could go with clothes and that, that was about eight of those. And then here comes another one with all these toys and these children were with their mama and they were standing there and they were looking at all these toys and they were saying, mommy, you know, and the mama goes, I know, you have to go over there if you want to get that. She said, because we don't, we don't have that here, you know, I mean, so, what, I mean, these are from the eyes of a little child, but what I'm saying is, is I am a very humanitarian person myself. I walk into the food bank, I was at a meeting with Shelby yesterday where we talked about the local churches that are packing food into backpacks every week so that these children can go home and have food in their backpacks if they don't have a, a parent they're feeding them. And so, yes, and we, Shelby gave the numbers of the, the, the people that are, are really needing food in this area. You know, I just think that it's very important that we really look and, and not place judgment on someone's feelings about how they might, uh, maybe not be in a humanitarian or if you are or whatever. I think that we're all in this together and I think that we need to look at this. I understand the dilemmas there, there's a lot of them, but we also, we also have a right to take care, I mean, not a right, we have a responsibility to take care of our people here as well. And, and so many of these things that we're hearing are uncertainties and I know the world is, it promised you everything, but I think that with some of these things, that we need to be a little bit more secure with what's fixing to happen because you don't have too much control over that once you've, you've got it here, so.
Well, I think, and I think it's always been this one in the world's history, people are uncertainly conscious fear and, uh, fear can be a pretty, uh, pretty negative influence on all, so I think we're being cautious, being diligent.
Well, I understand that fear is, I, I've always heard fear is like a faith and I can tell you this, I have, I have faith like an ostrich, but I'm telling you also that you have to open up your eyes and you have to look and you have to have a plan B. And, and I think that we need to be cautious and, and see what we're doing.
I am understanding what I've heard so far that, uh, in this group, vast majority saying to not want to authorize the expansion of this facility for various reasons. I'm not questioning the authenticity of any of your reasons, I'm not questioning anything. I'm just saying that's what it is. I'm trying to explain my process, I, that's all I'm trying to do. But, uh, unless we have a motion, I guess we'll table this for now and if Geo wants to pursue it further, I suggest they contact me and we'll set up a public hearing. Everybody can, uh, if you have people you've heard speak on the subject and some of the problems, give them to us and we'll get to all of the educated on the subject so we can make it a far more suitable.
I think we need to have a public hearing.
I think that's.
And, and my feeling is too, is one thing is this, they've got a saying in directions, don't want to keep them in the fence, keep them inside and, you know, I don't know whose fence we're going to keep them in, but we've got to put them in a pit somewhere, but we need to have a public hearing to discuss this, but after that, I'm going to be in charge.
Uh, I have, I have two questions. My first question is, at the last regular court meeting on October fourteenth, Judge Butler, you stated you would try to have several outside CPA firms here to discuss the cost of performing a full audit of our county's financial status at this meeting. Do you have any here today or have?
I do not, and I think my statement was, I was, we were going to have multiple candidates, we're going to work that, do the independent audit, the annual independent audit. Uh, I, I think I also told you that there is a full forensic audit already ongoing. I don't have to hire anybody to do that, if somebody else is already hired one that's underway. Uh, as far as the CPA firms we're going to have to employ for the annual audit, uh, I have gotten two names so far, I'm trying to get three or four and then we will give them down there.
But that's for your annual spot audit, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not for a full, complete audit?
The full, the parameters of full, complete audit, I, I can't say that I'm really understanding that, but I will tell you that there is a forensic audit going on right now, uh, examining the county's finances, okay? And I don't think there's any.
Does that leave you a time limit of how, how long that's going to be going on?
No, I, there hasn't been, my experience of just independent spot audits has been that it takes months. So I, you know, I don't know, I don't know how long it can take, complete the process. I'm not in charge of it, I'm not recording anything.
Well, I talked to a, this past week, to a Department of Justice, the Inspector General, and he, he said, I was telling him our situation and I'm just wanting to know if I, we need to go further as concerned citizens to try to get this, I mean, our books are out of balance, Judge. We're getting all this money in. Uh, they were not able to give a much of a report due to some investments that they can't get in line or whatever. I mean, it concerns taxpayers, we have a lot of money coming in.
It absolutely concerns me too. I went to the extent of, uh, no, thanks, sir, for sure. We went to the extent of having, uh, we're setting up an independent office, uh, of a financial manager for this county, uh, to try to straighten these things out, to maintain books correctly, to make sure that deposits are made in a timely fashion, make sure that it makes, that books do balance. As far as what's happened prior to this time, that's what the forensic audit is trying to determine.
Will the forensic audit bring the books into balance or are they looking for fraud?
They are looking to see what problems do exist, to see if there has been any wrongdoing of any kind and certainly to bring them into balance. If you find there's been wrongdoing and you uncover what it is, then that should enable you to bring the books back into balance. It makes sense to me, I would think Paul would do the same thing, you know, you find out, uh, where the discrepancies are, what they are, what their cause is and, uh, figure out how to get things back into balance.
Well, can we hear it, uh, or see any of this in our local newspaper to let these concerned citizens and taxpayers know what's going on? I mean, we don't, we never heard anything about the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that these spot auditors cost, never heard anything, that's our tax dollars.
Oh, wait a minute, they got a pair of reporters on.
But we've never read anything in our local newspaper. I mean, people need to know this, a lot of people can't take off to be here at our meeting.
Local newspapers here.
Yes.
And, uh, I think it was covered.
In a forensic audit, I haven't seen anything that, that was in the newspaper about a forensic, ongoing forensic audit.
All right, and I think we're going beyond the scope of the agenda right now. I, I'm trying to describe to you the best I can what's going on. I've got a motion, jury, and I'm saving all the paper.
I just want to say real quickly, if you haven't voted today, the last day of early voting, get out and vote and if not today, then election day.
Thank you.